Call me in order, we'll call Cassandra please.
Legislator Hathaway.
Here.
Legislator Burkeburg.
Here.
Legislator Burns.
Here.
Legislator Gilbert.
Here.
Legislator Chartren.
Here.
Legislator Moorehan.
Here.
Legislator Coulter.
Here.
Legislator Osborne.
Here.
Legislator King.
Here.
Legislator Delhaw.
Here.
Please stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report of the Finance and Rules Committee for Rule Six, this side will be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Rules Committee has met and they recommend immediate action on the prefiled resolution.
Need motion? Ryan, second by Dick. Need discussion? All favor, I propose carries. Who would like to comment on any subject from the floor? Having seen no reaction, move back to the presentation. Before we do the introductions, Ryan had a few comments that he wanted to go and think.
Can you put that bridge up there? So I had the opportunity today to go out with our highway superintendent, Tim Hunt. We went around to some of the projects the county was working on and one thing I saw that I thought was kind of apt for our discussion today is a completely wooden bridge, which is in the town of Harrisburg. There's actually two wooden bridges and even the trusses that go underneath are wooden.
And it's a one lane?
And it's one lane. And it got me thinking that, you know, we're talking about our facilities today. You know, how many places in the county do we have things like this wooden bridge where you look at and you think, you know, how is this not been addressed in so many years? How is this still out there? And I think in a lot of ways, we have the same situation with our facilities. And so whatever we decide today, let's just think about parts of our county infrastructure that are like this bridge. Things that people look at and think, man, we really need to start looking at some of this stuff and taking care of it. So I just thought it was a nice metaphor as I was driving around. Tim brought me all the way down to Osceola, so I had plenty of time to think. Probably a dangerous thing, right Phil? So with that, I'll turn it over to our partners at CNS. You guys remember Chuck, of course. Chuck Brooks helped us with the JCC project and then Patrick Carrier's been the architect working with us for this project and they've got a presentation.
Great, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to present the concept report that we've been working on for the last few months there with some of the key staff from different departments within the county. What I'm going to do is I'm going to start by just reviewing the scope of the whole, this whole exercise pretty much was to delineate a scope for this proposed 2022 facilities improvement project. And with that scope, put together a schedule and proposed a cost estimate of what the probable cost would be to do all of the work. We looked at the existing facilities, we looked at the efficiency of the existing facilities as well as the makeup of the facilities, the structure of the facilities, the facilities compared to current day codes and just did an overall analysis of the facilities and then met with the individual departments and so forth to go through their goals and needs of... There we go, scared me. Their goals and needs. And then we met with smaller committees to define, you know, those, the scope of those portions of the buildings. And with that said, I'll move on to the next slide. Let's see here, we've got to go right there. Okay, so this is an aerial view of the existing highway garage. In the upper right, it's the blue building there, Long East Road. Do you want to make sure that they know that they have the exact same slides here? Oh yes, so if you want to follow along in your books, they're right in the same order there, Chuck and Phil. So at the upper right, there is the existing highway garage. And what we're looking at there is adaptive reuse of that building. The exterior's been recently redone. Upgrades to the windows, roofing and so forth and insulation. So we're good there, but there's going to require some interior upgrades to meet current codes and standards and such. I'll get into more details on that when we get into the actual slides on the building. We are looking at relocating a couple of departments from the DSS building over to that building. One of them being soil and water and the other rural development. And we'll talk a little more about that when we get to the DSS building. Now on the other side of East Road, or before I jump over to the other side of the East Road, we are looking at also an alternative to demolish the existing sign shop and the existing welding shop and create more parking or retaining wall and just clean up that whole site over there. Those buildings have been delineated prior to us as, you know, beyond their useful life. And we'll get into more about the structures there as we go through the presentation. On the other side of the East Road, on the upper left, the blue building there, we're looking at tearing down the existing cold storage barn and reconstructing that. That building will not be heated. We're looking at potentially sprinklering it just because of the amount of equipment in there and the value of that equipment. We can always put that in as an alternate if you wish, but we do have that figured into the price. Just below that, the large blue square is what we're looking at for the proposed highway garage. And that would have a direct in. You'd come drive into the building and drive through straight through so that nobody has to back up, turn around and drive out. We worked closely with Tim on that and he was very helpful on the layout of that building. And then just below that is a smaller blue square there and what that is, is a wash bay building. So that you can pull into the site, drive through the wash bay building with the plow trucks and other vehicles and then pull right into the highway garage. So this is the floor plan of the existing highway garage. In the floor plan here, we're showing parks and recreation in there and rural development, soil water. They're all located on the right-hand side of the building. We set it up with one point of entry that we can kind of control, you know, who's coming in and out and so forth. And then each individual department would have their own entrances into those departments. One of the nice things here is we could share services such as the restrooms, the break room and other amenities to the building rather than, you know, building separate areas for them. So it was a pretty good use of that space and we were still able to maintain quite a bit of storage area to the left of it and top. And then there's storage down below and we have storage within the mezzanine above. This slide here shows a concept drawing of the proposed highway garage. As I mentioned, you can drive directly through the building from the wash bay into the building and straight out. There's a mezzanine in this building that we're looking at for storage. We'll also have our mechanical systems for the office areas. Those office areas and break room would have heating, ventilation and air conditioning. Ventilation, we'll be looking at fresh air intake to make sure that we're meeting current standards for air exchanges. And let's see, the welding shop would be in the lower right-hand corner. We'll have areas for the signage, for some of the parts of the sign shop to utilize areas within there for storage and just as a base location working out of.
Can you?
Yep.
Can you go back to that? Can you show, can you use your pointer and show where some of this stuff is versus just saying, you can't really read it.
Oh yeah, it would show up better. I'm sorry, yeah. So on your, in the back of your book here is eleven by seventeen drawings that will show up a little bit better. What was there?
Yes. I could always go up and ventilate, you know.
No, I think we can do that. So if you want to follow along, in the back of the book, these drawings are in the same order as this. We have the floor plan for the highway garage, which is more legible than on the screen. And what we have is an entrance up top here where you can come in. The offices are located there. The highway superintendent is located there. There's restrooms, locker rooms there and the break room. Here is, well down here would be the overhead door where you drive in. I'm sorry, up here. You drive in. The plow trucks can pull in to the side, back up and drive straight out. Over here, we have park storage and then we have maintenance over on this side with their own overhead doors. And then we have a welding shop down in the corner.
If you're trying to kind of understand how it fits on the site, if you go back to the, that first slide, looks like this, where he was pointing out the overall site. You can see arrows around this large blue box on the bottom left-hand corner. That's the big square.
So the blue box right there is the wash area?
No, so this one here is the wash area, man. That one? Yeah, the little one. This bigger building, the square with the arrows pointing in the three sides. That's the proposed highway garage. So if you're trying to, you know, get an idea about how these fit together, it's in the same orientation on your sheet.
Cool. So I'm looking at this welding shop on the bigger press. I don't care about the landscape for that part. I'm looking at the actual building.
Yes.
This is the old building. This is the existing highway garage.
No, I'm talking about the new one.
Yeah.
The blue, the big blue building.
Yep. This one. So we've got the welding shop down in the corner.
Down in the corner. What are they going to weld in?
This is the layout.
It's, yeah. It looks like you can bring up a plow in there. You know, a plow. It's only got double swinging doors. So, what's a welding shop going to weld then?
Hopefully they don't weld anything.
Then why are we putting one in?
Well, they're going to always do miscellaneous stuff, right? A small piece here or there.
They don't weld on the plows?
Very rarely, very rarely. But that originally had a, an overhead door.
It does, it does. It's an overhead door.
Yeah.
Where's the shrub on that?
So it's originally a corner.
Right in the corner, that's the door.
Yeah, it's a roll-up door.
A roll-up.
That's why I always...
Still couldn't really find a plow for that.
No, but I think, you know, like Tim said, it's, you know, it's, it can be used, it's going to be set up mainly as a maintenance shop slash welding shop. If they've got some, whatever it might be, they need to weld something to put together for whatever little project they might have going on, they would do it there rather than out in the open area.
More likely it blew out in the open area if you got to weld on a plow.
If it was on a plow, yeah.
If it was on a small fabrication, then that'll be done in that shop. And that's where the equipment, the tools will be. But if they do need to weld on a truck, yes, they would absolutely weld, roll the welder out into the big shop and weld it up there.
And we did talk about different locations. We haven't keyed in on them specifically yet, but where the welder could be connected to. So there'd be different areas within the whole building where they can do welding.
Right. How many bays do you got for trucks?
We've got one, two, three, four, five for plow trucks. And then we have one, two, three, four, five other, like, so there is here for storage and one there. And then this right down the middle, this long rectangle you see here is the trench drain where everybody flowed right through there. But there's plenty of room here for, you know, other vehicles other than just the plow trucks.
How many plow trucks do we have, Tim?
We have six plow trucks, four main line and two spares. And that should accommodate all six if I was correct.
I think maybe that was one up here that we were going to put.
Yeah, one of them will be backed straight in.
Straight in there, yeah.
And then the rest of them will be parked out. Then there should be three loaders in there and then the rest will be pickup trucks for parking lots and stuff like that. It's done.
It looks good. Are you content with it, Tim?
Yeah, I think it'll work. Could we use more? Absolutely. But, you know, everything is a cost benefit analysis. And it fits on the site and it does do what we needed to do. We worked pretty hard to get everything in there. Yep, we did. And, you know, and nothing today, just to keep in mind is, nothing's cast in stone yet. We may end up adding a little bit of this, maybe taking a little off the cold storage bit or something. You know, the intention of this whole exercise, this phase, is to get us to where we've got a pretty good scope and a pretty good budget and schedule to determine, you know, is this what the county wants to do, you know, go ahead with. But there will be, you know, through the next four, five months, there's quite a bit of work that's going to have to be done to, you know, develop this to the next phase and then to the final phase of going to construction and so forth. So these are concept bays.
Yeah, this estimate's probably an estimate phase too.
Yep.
You got $244 a square foot. You think that's really practical?
I do. And we'll get into the estimate here shortly as we move through the slides, yes. Yep. You know, and you've got to look at the size of a project. $244 doesn't buy you much if you've got a 2,000 square foot building, you know, because but you've got the efficiency of the size of the project that's going to bring your square foot cost down. You know, what we would do is, you know, at 60% and 100% is develop a comprehensive itemized, you know, cost estimate of the project and all they do is cost estimating. So we've got a 5% contingency figured into here too.
Yeah, 5% on $244 isn't much.
Yep, yep.
They'd only put you at $256. At today's costs? This is steel building?
Yes, pre-engineered steel building. You've got to keep in mind too is, a lot of people, you know, a square foot, breaking it down to a square foot cost is, at the next phase, we're going to do a detailed comprehensive, you know, analysis of the cost. Square foot cost, you know, a lot of this area is just a wide open area. This whole area here, there's nothing there except wide open, that concrete slab and a roof. You know, that's all you've got in that whole area, the front walls, well, the outside walls, you know, the exterior walls. But the two-thirds of the building right there is just one wide open space, you know. So, you know, that, you've got to take that into account too, is what type of building is it? You know, for, you know, a new office building, you're going to be more expensive because you've got more bathrooms, you've got, you know, more offices, you've got break rooms, more kitchens, stuff like that. You know, a lot of that has, you know, in fact, has an overall cost.
The other thing I'll add is that I think you guys are familiar with CNS as a company and you know we have a construction company as well. Well, you know, we are a rep of Newcore buildings, I think is, is, you know, every company that does these pre-engineered buildings, they kind of... With one of the, you know, Parko Pruden or Newcore, we put up a lot of Newcore buildings. And so we have the benefit of recent projects that we've actually constructed. The other thing is that we have done, I don't know, Patrick, what'd you say, probably seven or eight highway garages just in the last probably two years, three years? So, you know, just in our group, we've done a handful of these.
We've got the experience here with CNS, you want to build in here? And I think you know what I mean.
I do.
Quite a bit overrun.
Our cost estimate in that one was within a couple of percentage points of where the bids came in, you know. So I, I would agree with Patrick that I think that it is a reasonable cost estimate at this stage of the game, at the conceptual stage of the game.
Okay. Cold storage building, we're looking at a building that would be 150 feet by 50 feet. It'll be a non-insulated building. We'll have how, let's see, one, two, three, four, about four overhead doors on there. We didn't put an overhead door in each bay. Felt it wasn't necessary from talking, you know, with everybody on it. And we've got a couple of land doors in this building here. We'll even have just a stone floor. We're looking at, you know, speaking of the budget to save money. There's, you know, we've got to look at function and efficiency and actually give the community what's needed but not, you know, go overboard on things. And we talked about a concrete slab in here and it was brought up that, you know, we could do compacted stone with some finer crushed stone on top of it and it would work fine for what the county needs. So this building here is pretty bare bones. We'll probably have a concrete wall of about four feet high just to protect the siding and all from getting beat up. So from there on up, it's all this pre-engineered steel, metal siding and metal roofing. And if you want to put in a dry pipe sprinkler system, we could do so. And as I said earlier, we can always do that like as an alternate and, you know, decide at that point if you want to do it or not depending on how the bids come in in the future.
There's no concrete floor in it?
No concrete floor. At this point, that's what we're discussing.
What is the cost of it? You got this priced out at 1.1. And there's no, no concrete floor in it?
Right now, it's a, it's a run and rush driving surface within that building. So I, I'm hearing from you that you have some concern about the cost.
Absolutely.
And I understand that. Going back to the JCC building, which you brought up, I will, yeah, I'll, I'll bring up that our first cost estimate, the one CNS did, was just a couple of percentage points of the final construction cost of the building ultimately. And I think if you were to go back into the documents that we prepared, even at the conceptual phase, we were, we weren't really that far off, you know, of the, of the final cost of the building. The first cost estimate that was prepared that you're probably referencing wasn't one that we prepared. So coming into this project, one of the things we talked about was that this phase is really important to understand what the real cost of this project is going to be. We didn't do a project without vetting out the scope, talking to the key stakeholders and seeing what types of buildings, you know, where we wanted to put people, what buildings we wanted to put together and coming up with a cost estimate that was going to give you a realistic idea of what this project was going to cost. Because I think maybe in the previous one, some people came into the project with a, not a realistic appreciation of how much that project was going to ultimately cost. We wanted to avoid that in this project by doing this first phase conceptual work to give you more information before you voted on the project. So that's what I was trying to say is I do think that this cost estimate is much closer to what the final cost is going to be than the cost estimate that was prepared before we were engaged for the Lewis County Ed Center project. If that makes sense. And I don't know if, you know, Ryan, if I said that right or if anybody has anything to add to that. I think there's probably only one person here that's interested in relitigating that for the 8,000th time, so let's keep going.
Um, so this is the Department of Social Services site before, but before I do that, I want to have Chuck just to show everybody, it's small, but he'll talk to you a little bit about this 3D model we did of the existing highway site.
So we prepared a massing model because sometimes it's a little bit easier to see things in three dimensions and, you know, as opposed to just looking at plans. And we're going to leave this year so you can, you know, get an idea of how these buildings might lay out. But he showed you up there and kind of oriented you to the site. This building right here represents the existing highway garage, the one that's, that's there right now. This is East Road and this is your fuel facility that's, that's there right now. Your existing sign shop right now is over here. This is the sign shop that, you know, I, I came out several years ago and had a column that was, you know, not plumb, that we've had to fix that sign shop a couple of times and they don't even, you know, park vehicles in it anymore. So that's space that's not being utilized. This project proposes to demolish that sign shop, which I think was part of the plan anyway, and extend the existing retaining wall around the corner and provide some additional parking. Your existing welding shop is up in this area right here. You can see in the, in the proposed, that welding shop is no longer there either. The smaller building, which was what you were asking about the wash bay, this is the, the new wash bay, the new highway garage, proposed cold storage building. For those familiar with the highway site, you know that we have currently an exit out onto East Road that's right across from the parking lot, but much too close to the intersection, you know, for vehicles that are making quick turns onto East Road and there's a little bit of a traffic issue there. The other thing is that the grading down here is very challenging because this fuel facility is set. We're not changing that elevation, so we had to build the site around this, that fuel facility. So there is an existing entrance on this side of the site that we're proposing to develop further. Allowing a cleaner drive-through off of East Road and a safer entrance and exit into the site that doesn't put it so close to this intersection and, you know, out of line of sight of vehicles turning left.
So you'll be on 812?
Yes, yeah, that, there is an entrance right there right now. I think there's a, there's a farmer's truck trail that kind of utilizes that entrance and comes up the backside of what will be, right now you have a bunch of vehicles parked on open gravel up there. So we're proposing to improve that, that already existing entrance. And then that gives us more options to deal with stormwater down here also. So while Patrick's talking through the Department of Social Services building, I'll just...
So I have a question.
Yep.
You've got school buses still coming in there to fuel?
But yeah, nothing changes with the fuel facility.
But they're going to go in on 812? Is that what you said?
I, I think the way that we talked about it, and Tim, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they were coming off of East Road and going on 812, correct?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one-way traffic this way.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So that's, that's the way we discussed it.
Thank you.
Do we own that property, the road, the 812?
No, it's, it's the county property. Actually, the, that, that road is within the property boundaries as well, that truck trail.
So that was actually the driveway into a house.
What's that?
There was a house there at one time and that was the driveway to the house, as I remember it.
That predates me. And I mean, I know that where we have the JCC Ed Center, I believe it's the same gentleman that owns all that property behind the Ed Center. And that entrance is to the, the southern end of that, that property up into the front. There is, this goes up there for, to access this field. And there's a structure up there, like a utility structure that he's got on the southern end of this field.
Okay, so here we've got an aerial view of the Department of Social Services building. It's kind of got the, the roof appears to be like a light beige color there. It's kind of outer stone, stone street there. Behind that, we have a storage building and we have another storage building that we're looking at having it demolished and creating a little maintenance shop for buildings and grounds, facility people. And we'll get into a floor plan of that here shortly. And then there's also that little blue building there in the, whoops. That little blue building, we're creating a new building back here that also has storage for the Board of Elections, for their voting machines. And we're looking at relocating them from downtown here over to the upper right-hand corner there of the DSS building. With this building, I've got some floor plans here we'll go through and I'll talk a little bit about the upgrades to the building. But I want to show you some pictures of the exterior first before we get into those. This is standing with your back to the Public Safety Building, looking at the west side, the entrance off the driveways there. And what we're looking at doing with that is, that photograph comes out a little bit dark there. Completely redoing the building envelope, upgrading the insulation in the building, upgrading the exterior materials. As you can see, the outside siding is beyond its useful life, starting to get beat up down near the ground, which is typical of siding. And all of the buildings, we're looking at trying to keep the metal off the ground. So the other problem we have here is that the, all the water sheds to the north and south towards the road and towards the back of the site. And we've been having a lot of problems running up on the building. I spent a lot of time with Matt O'Connor, walking through the building and talking about, you know, issues they have with this building, with the age that it is. So we're going to address those issues by going to internal roof drains on the building so that everything's collected internally and then it filters into your stormwater management system. That way we don't have any water running up, we don't have robust cupboards, downspouts or anything else. We'll rebuild the facades on the mansards that have white part around the top. We're going to redo that with a parapet wall that goes around. And this other picture might be a little bit lighter. This picture we're looking at from outer stone, and here's one there. You can see the lighter brick on the corners, that's, we would maintain the brick that's there and then pull off the siding that's there to strip it down to the studs, as we will with the interior of the building. And we're going to be completely redoing all of the systems of the building. There's a chance where we can redo any electrical that's necessary in those exterior walls, re-insulate them, put on a new brick veneer, which will be a slightly contrasting color more than likely. The color on the corners pretty much ties into your Public Safety Building. And we'll look at brick samples that might kind of complement both buildings, being that they're in the same area. This is looking from Stowe Street of, you know, from the corner. It's a little bit far away, but let's see, that might be, we're not actually zooming into that. Whoops. But actually I can, here we're looking at some signage up there, but we haven't gotten too far into this. But what we'd like to do is emphasize that corner of the building and actually create this building with a new identity. So I have a single point of entry for all the departments. We've been referring to it right now. Which who knows how that may adapt as we go along, but that's what we're referring to it as. The main entry will be back here. But we'll have some signage up here that delineates the Human Services Building.
A quick question, again on this. How, how much of the building is actually going to be left?
Yep.
Tore down, I mean basically tore down.
So, yeah, so here's a demolition plan. This shows all of the departments that are within the building, right group. In upper left, we have Soil and Water, Rural Development. We have Office of Aging in there. And Department of Social. So we have all those departments within here, but we're literally looking at cutting the whole building, redoing the electrical, redoing all of the plumbing, mechanical systems and everything and keeping the shell. I'll go to the next slide and this might answer your questions more or less. We were able to work with all these individual departments and then collectively work with them and say, how do you feel about, you know, the location of your department, the size of your department? We compared the existing size of their departments to the proposed size. And everybody was there with the proposed layout of the building without putting an addition onto it. Initially, there was thoughts of putting an addition onto this building. Unfortunately, the east side up here, the grade drops off steeply on that whole side. So that's not ideal to put an addition on. The backside here is all pavement and then we have some other buildings over there. This side over here is all parking area and then along the front is all parking. So we were able to work within the confines of the existing building. And this is about 20,000 square feet. I just finished a project in Watertown for JRC, which is that of Jefferson County. And that was a 40,000 square foot building. And use that as a cross reference for the cost estimating against the costs we were coming up with here on this, which we'll get to again, you know, when we get to the estimating side. But that was a complete gut and rehab. The building was over about 50 years old. And they just said, hey, if we're going to go in and start moving walls around and doing all this, we might as well do everything at once. Bring it up to current energy standards, you know, and just make the place more efficient and functional for their use.
And you reviewed the roof on this building?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to be redoing the roof with a new roof. It'll be tapered, rigid insulation with a rubber membrane. And as I said before, what we'll do is we're going to, on the north and south pitch the roof back onto itself and put internal roof drains there. And when I say we're going to, that's at this point in time, the concept phase is what we're contemplating doing. I like to see, you know, water collected internally, as long as it's internal and we talk with buildings and grounds and others. And it's not going to freeze up like it is right now on the building. I've got photos of the ice building up on the building and it's awful. I didn't bring them with me, but.
Basically, I think, basically, so anything really you're going to keep are like few studs or what?
Okay, so yes, I'm sorry, I kind of went around about on that. But to answer your first question, yes, we're keeping the structure. So we've got the whole structure, we've got the slab, we have the basement. And, you know, the, your site work on the building, there's a lot of work just to get to where you can, you know, prepare a site for the first floor, for the slab, for the structure and all that. So, you know, even though we're upgrading the building, there's still a lot of value to the building that's there.
This is a pre engineered metal building. So all these walls that you see internally are, are there, they're just non load bearing stud walls.
Right.
So the, the structural portions of the building are staying put, along with the foundation and the superstructure, you know, within that, so.
Basically, the metal studs of the exterior walls.
Well, it's, it's a pre engineered metal building, so they have, you know, large rolled steel columns, you know, the, the moment frames that are part of the, the superstructure. So the, the skeleton of the building is staying intact. It's all those interior non load bearing walls that are being.
The exterior walls will strip down to the studs and will re realize the exterior walls.
So would the skeleton be the next thing to give away then? And, or I mean, that's going to last the longest of any building in front of that thing.
So that's usually not the thing that becomes a problem in the pre engineered metal buildings, right? What happens, like Patrick was saying, is you put up these pre engineered metal buildings, the, the skeleton's strong, the skeletons, they, they'll quote you a 50 year life, but in reality, they last quite a bit longer than that. I mean, as evidenced by your existing highway garage is much older than that. And the primary superstructure of your existing highway garage is largely okay. It's, it's the other pieces and parts that start to deteriorate. One thing, you know, you, you run metal siding or the pre engineered metal building, metal siding all the way down to the ground in Lawville. As you get closer to the ground, you know, that starts to deteriorate over years of, years of use. All the interior, you know, spaces, needs change. And so now the rooms that worked great when they built the building, they're not, they're no longer the right fit for the occupants of the building. And it, the, the pieces that you see start to, um, look deteriorated, don't mean that the building itself is, you know, is deteriorated. The primary structure itself might still be just as sound as it was, you know, when it was built.
And it is. I mean, we break that up above the ceilings and look at it, look down the walls.
That's right.
And the structure itself is in fine shape. Yeah, so as I mentioned, upgrading all of the mechanical plumbing, electrical security systems, we talked about that a lot throughout. Door access points on all the buildings, we'll get into more details about that as design moves along. But this has a single point of entry that's worth again, right here. It's facing the Public Safety Building, which I'm referring to as the west side of the building because it's kind of on a 45 degree of the north access. But so there'd be security right there as you come in. All of the different departments, whoops, sorry. All of the different departments rotate right off of the core of the building. All the public spaces we have here in the center, reception and interview rooms. And we have large meeting rooms. And then in the back corner, we have a break room. So, which can also double as a multipurpose room. We're going to upgrade all the light safety systems, fire alarm sprinkler. Sprinkler, and there's several items within the building that just don't meet current codes, New York State building codes. I talked about the installation and, and the rest there. This is the maintenance shop behind.
Can you go back there for just a second? How's that single point of access going to work as far as egress in an emergency, like a fire or something?
Yep. Good, good question. So the, coming in the door here, everything flows around like that and out. So there's no dead end corridors. We still have this door over here where Office for the Aging is, that will be maintained as an emergency egress. It'll also be for employees to come in and out. The employees can come in and out here also with this door. So we're not quite completely closed off those other doors.
Okay, so the single point of access is for customers?
Correct, yes, for the public, yes. And these other ones will be controlled by car keys. But they'll, they'll still be means of egress and exiting. Now, while I'm still here, this is the area that we delineated for Board of Elections. In the back corners, relocating them to this building. And they've got all the space they need there to perform their functions with their voting machines being located over in here. So that's just across the parking lot on the backside of the parking lot. This is that blue square box that I showed initially, that would be a new structure. And we started building it onto the building. We've got, oh, we forget the square footage is from out hand, but there's this area to the left of the Board of Elections, which is a little training room, storage and voting, uh, storage. And then the area to the right is the workshop for your facility people. And that's got the janitors closet, toilet room and office back here. And then overhang for store, for storage of some smaller equipment, mowers and so forth.
Is that one bathroom going to fit the occupancy load of that building?
Yes, because the right hand side, we really have no occupancy load. It's a workshop, there might be two or three people.
When they're in there working, you're going to have, you might have two, three people for a machine, they got 30 machines.
Oh, you're talking about for the, for the voting area?
The voting area.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the maintenance shop. So the voting area, at this point, we don't have a bathroom there. They've got their bathrooms right inside the door over on the, across the driveway, which meets the New York State Plumbing Code requirements. As long as they're within 500 feet, they've got access here. Because there's nobody over there working all day long. They're going in, they're doing a little bit of work, they're in there for short periods of time. But it wouldn't be hard now that we ended up adding a bathroom here that wasn't originally there. We could always plug in a bathroom over here, that might be a good idea. Yeah. And, and in the rest of the project, these are where you go from one face to next. These are items that we want to revisit, always revisit where you're at, how you got there. And, you know, so we've already got a few comments back. Then, you know, since the meetings, people have thought of a couple of things, we're keeping track of that. And, you know, we, the next step would be design development, where you sit down and you go through the same meetings with the same groups. And then you get everybody together and say, hey, does this still work for you? But I, I could see this having another bathroom there for them. They didn't request one. You know, I think if we were to talk about it more, that probably be the.
They've got a lot smaller space now and they're having problems with one bathroom, that's why I just brought it up.
And well, see, and, you know, so with the, this that building here, without going into a lot of details, we're getting rid of the gang toilet rooms over in this area. And we've got four private bathrooms, USX private bathrooms.
For the workers?
Well, some of these are for workers and some are public. So the two here facing the corridor are for public use primarily because the meeting rooms, the interview rooms. These two on the left are specifically for Department of Social Services. Over here, that, three, actually, one, two, three on that corner, where we could delineate which ones we want to be accessible to the public and which ones private. And that's not to say in some ways in that corner of the building, it's a stat number. And one's being used, they can use the other one. But we have just as many toilet fixtures as we had originally in the building. We just set it up in a different fashion that meets current, what current people are looking for is going towards the privacy ones, where you go in, you lock the door and no one's walking in, you know, at the same time where you're walking in and out.
Can you go back to the other one now?
Yes.
900 square feet is enough for their, for their voting machines? As they used to say, what, 1000 square, 100 square feet per machine? Now that they're going to the iPad, they reduce?
I think they've, they're planning on having a separate iPad storage space of just that voting machine space should be enough.
Yeah, they're keeping the iPads over, you know.
But the, the square footages have changed because we talked about that quite a bit. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think it used to be, it was 100 square feet per machine.
Per machine.
Yeah. And there's 30 machines, I think you have there, somewhere's 28, 30 machines, I forget, I've worked offhand, so.
All you have to be able to do is set them up so that if any member of the public, even somebody in wheelchair, wanted to come and inspect a machine, they have enough room to wheel all the way around. So you, we can do this so that they can pull one out, it can be inspected and put back.
Previously though, they weren't allowed to do that.
Yeah.
They were, they had to have 100 square feet per machine as they said. But the iPads have changed that, I think.
I think that's what it was.
Is this a secure building?
Yes, it'll be a secure building, yep. We talked about, they, they like windows in there. We talked about having these windows up high so they'd be above, like, so you're not just looking in. There'll be windows so you can get some natural light and they'll be fixed, so they're not out for, no one's going to leave them open because we do have fresh air, makeup air for the area, which would be, you know, your heating violation, air conditioning. And it's actually easier to manage a building with fixed windows. So those will be up high for security purposes. And we do have, Greg, we have a layout where we laid out all the machines. We measured the individual machines, I just didn't have them shown on here. And we've got an aisle going down the middle, the machines each side.
Now, if they, if they get an impound, an election where the machines are impounded and stuff, there's room to secure that for the standard that the state wants? Have they, have they talked to them about you?
I, we haven't gotten, I mean, the subjects of, of machines that were impounded, but anyways.
I asked that question because occasionally you get an election that somebody goes to the courts and then they have to put the machines in a different secure area.
Got it.
Certain amount of locking up and everything.
Yep, which makes sense, but we hadn't gotten that subject.
It may have changed with the new machines, I just.
No, that's, that's a good point because we hadn't made it to that point yet. They didn't bring it up, I met with everybody within their department.
It may have changed.
But we can talk about that and definitely I think we could, you know, take this storage room over here and even just split that, split that in half, you know. Have one more money room, just big enough where you could put a machine in there like you're saying, that gets locked down. No one's got access to it until they decide, till it's been inspected or such.
I haven't met with them in three, four years, it may have changed, but at one time.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a lot of different moving parts to this whole project because looking at trying to consolidate all these smaller projects, all as one bigger project, you know, and get everything done at one time.
I think the efficiency that you gain though, when you combine them all, you realize in the process of talking to all these different departments, you know, if, if you have sporadic projects of trying to service this department and then that department and then that department, you lose the ability to make use of, of all the facilities and see the big picture. So I think this exercise. So I think this exercise was was well worth it to get an idea on what, how best to make efficient use of the existing space that you have um across those two different sites.
We have a lot of shared spaces here that were never shared before because they just weren't in the right location. Uh these interview rooms in the center here were towards the front of the building and uh they were used by Department of Social Services, but they couldn't be used by anyone else per se. And now it's set up to where uh there's a lot more shared spaces within the building now than there were before. And that's how we were able to, you know, keep all these departments in here. We did move soil and water out, which gave us a little room, more room in rural development. We moved them out into the existing highway garage, so that helped a lot there. Without having to build an addition onto here, um we were able to do the nice, you know, facilities that you already have.
Can we talk about operating while you're doing a fairly major rehab in that building and stuff? Jenny, how's that going to work?
Well, that's a really good question because I don't want to be answered. But I think we may have to be moving offsite someplace.
I would sort of agree to that, yeah.
Can people still work from home?
One hundred percent.
We have to have some walk-in space available for social services. So we would have to rent some type of storefront somewhere in in Lewis County.
And even if they're working from home, some functions still have to be performed back in the.
Right.
We did have a number, and I can't think of it off the top of my head, but Jenny had had uh kind of done some preliminary thoughts of um we would need a space for X amount of people. And I thought it was somewhere around twenty-eight to thirty, do you remember that?
Around thirty.
Around thirty. So we would, per day, so we could have like alternating work from home, but we still have to have a space where people can walk off the street and and get services. Um so a a space for twenty-eight to thirty, um which, you know, if we put our heads together and looked around Lewis County, I'm sure there's, there's a storefront or two that we could come up with. But yes, we wouldn't be able to, I don't think, you know, CNS or the folks that have been kind of in these, these planning discussions think it's very feasible to keep our employees in the building while we're doing.
I didn't, I didn't think it was either.
No, and it can be done.
But that's, that's no big deal, you, you can rent. There's, there's companies out there, you can rent the whole name thing, bring it in on trailer, drop it and six months later it goes away.
Yeah, and um.
But this is somewhat of a big deal for the rest of us.
Hi Jenny.
Just at that point, the state requires a six-month notice in advance of the location we're moving into for them to review it.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of.
Plus you have to have a secure computer lines, right?
Everything, yes, yeah.
It can't be just a trailer.
Right, and the record storage, depending on, you know, if we're moving out, is there secure places to keep records? Being able to vary that, import records and other things like that.
How long would you anticipate this building being demolished?
Um probably about six to eight months.
So if you figured a year, you'd be comfortable?
Oh yeah, yeah, more than comfortable, yeah.
And the cost, it's got to get tied with the cost of the construction and stuff too. We're running current cost for whatever we rent every year.
Yeah, and the art project I'm finishing up right now, that actually got the ribbon cut in the middle of July in Watertown. Uh as I said, that's forty thousand square feet. We designed it as two phases so that they could actually occupy the building. And then they had a CM come in and they, they weigh out the benefits. And it's a lot of work to relocate. They had to go through all the Department of uh Department of Health and, you know, state agencies to get approval on where they were going, how long they were going to be there. They've got to get approval to go back into the new building. Um so it's, it's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of red tape. Um but you know, if you weigh out the hassle of trying to be in the building during the construction, it's just beneficial to move, if if you can find space to put the people in.
So if we get our grabs done first, they can go look around.
And and we will be looking at, you know, phasing. What we don't want them to do is start any work on the DSS building until they've had ample time to order everything and possibly even store it, you know, uh because then we know everything's there. That will move it along a lot quicker. So once we have a selected contractor, we can really get into the fine details of where are you ordering your doors from? Where are you ordering your windows? What are your longest lead times? And how long is it going to take you to do the demolition? And then they can really key in on the fact of, you know, um let's not start until we know we've got materials coming.
Twenty twenty-three then?
No.
Do you see the lead times on this stuff?
Oh, you're talking about lead times, well, we naturally this first thing, yeah, there's a long lead time on.
They told me twelve weeks for a start.
They're still getting caught up also from the pandemic, everybody was shut down for a whole year. So you know, hopefully people get back to work and uh you know, we get things moving along and um you know, and get caught up. Um where we watching that all as we get closer to the timeframe, what the lead times are and all that?
I'll also tell you that in some of our existing construction projects that were, you know, in design pre-COVID that are in construction now, um we've been working with contractors that uh, you know, alternate approaches that they have proposed with shorter lead times. Uh you know, we're running into issues with um some uh types of rebar uh that can be replaced with different ways of reinforcing concrete, things like that, so. Um and you know, we, we're working with with existing construction projects right now, trying to move those along. Um you know, with the supply chain issues. Hopefully it's better, but if it doesn't, um you know, that's, that's the collaborative process uh during construction that Patrick's talking about.
And and it's going to be key, it it will help because you're right, there's long lead times. And as Chuck mentioned with rebar, there's alternatives, you can use fiber meshing concrete, you know, is it preferred? We'd have to evaluate, you know, there's pros and cons to everything, but we'll definitely look at, you know, if there's a long lead time on a certain item, is what are our other options? You know, do we wait for that or do we have another option that, you know, may be sufficient? Um I'll move through some of these rather quickly, I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe was tonight. Um but all this information's in the report, hazardous materials survey came up with fairly uh good results. Uh we've got small. Site board in the existing highway garage, nothing major, just a couple of locations. Uh there's some caulk that has asbestos in it. Um there's a little bit of lead-based paint in there, which isn't a big deal for lead-based paint. If you encapsulate it or, you know, uh you're fine with that, it's all how you handle it. Um there's some universal special waste, what they call is like your lighting ballasts and so forth. If question?
Well, I thought we compared that a lot of days.
Oh.
Didn't we have Dakota? Dakota.
We had some, we had to disturb them though. Everything, we, we disturbed some of the floors and stuff, contaminated everything. But there was also some left there that we hadn't disturbed.
Like your encapsulation.
Yeah.
Yeah. So and these aren't, these aren't any main uh items, but we wanted to have, you know, we, we wanted to have all this stuff revisited. Um because we talked about whether it needed to be done or not, but you know, it's like, we wanted to make sure we knew what was there and what wasn't, and some lead-based paint showed up, so. Uh you know, and then there's some things like the PCB light ballasts and um uh fluorescent mercury bulbs, uh certain things like that, it's just if they remove them, they just have to follow proper protocol on how to give them and so forth. A Department of Social Services building, uh there was no asbestos that was found, uh to our knowledge. Uh there is uh some universal special waste, uh such as uh light bulbs and batteries, uh existing sign shop and welding shop. At that point, we weren't looking at doing anything with those two projects, uh those two buildings. And then we added them and you'll see they're highlighted on our estimate as a separate line item cost. Uh because towards the end of our concept phase, we decided to, hey, these buildings were just delineated a long time ago as being at the end of their useful life. And let's see if we can uh put that in the project, get them taken down and utilize the site that are for parking and uh so forth. Uh so those, we didn't do an assessment on, but we did a visual. Um where our uh engineer walked through the site there with Matt and looked at things and he didn't see anything alarming, so not too concerned there. But we would at the next phase be sure to go in and do a more comprehensive study uh in those buildings. Um I'll let uh Chuck talk briefly about the geotechnical borings and let's slide after that. Uh then we'll get on to the budget.
So um this thing you're looking at right here is the proposed new highway facility site. Uh for those that have been out there where the um, that site has some fairly significant grade changes over. And if you're going to use that um to any degree, uh you know, the, these vehicles don't like to have significant grade changes over, you know, in inside pavement. So we wanted to know especially if I where the proposed building was going to be, um were we going to run into any issues with bedrock and things like that? And we needed to know what was going to be required of the building foundations because that can significantly impact the project costs and schedule as well. Uh we had some good news when we did the geotechnical investigation. We did five borings on this site, three around the proposed um highway garage and two up by uh the existing cold storage building, which is, is similarly located to the proposed cold storage building. And we looked at prior geotechnical investigations that were done in support of previous projects, including the uh the fuel facility, which I think was mainly test bits. Um what we found was that there is what they call uh like general fill material. Two and a half feet down to like four and a half feet down across the whole site for the most part. Um that material, uh you know, includes cinders and other. Waste, you know, not, not um structural fill or not embankment material. But uh so we found that we would have to uh remove at least two and a half to four and a half feet, depending on where it is on the site of material to construct the building. The good news is you have to be down four to five feet anyway to be below frost. So uh we're not having to remove uh to a greater extent than we would just to construct the buildings. So that was good news. Uh and and that's, that's very typical of a lot of these, these highway sites, uh you know, what we find. Sometimes we find um unsuitable material much deeper than that. So that was, that was actually good news we got from this uh this boring. Uh we encountered bedrock approximately twenty-six feet down. Um and some of the weathered bedrock was, was higher up, but the, the bedrock is going to cause us excavation issues if we had to dig it out. Uh we didn't encounter it till about twenty-six feet down. Uh that is very important to us, especially up by borings one, two and three where the proposed highway garage is. Because if you look in that bottom left corner, you can see a number of lines in the proposed grading plan that are very close together. Uh that's an area of cut that has to be brought down in order to make use of that area of the site. Um so the good news there is that we're still well above the um, the competent bedrock. It's an excavatable part of the site, that's good news for the project. And allows us to make use of that area of the site and fit all the things that we wanted to on that, that um, that, that site. We also did um two infiltration tests uh on this site to inform our stormwater design. Because we are, uh it is a significant amount of impervious surface that's being um proposed for the project. Uh there's stormwater uh management practices that will need to be integrated into the project to um, you know, uh meet DEC requirements. So while our geotechnical engineer um was out there doing the, the borings, we had them take two infiltration tests as well. So uh that moving into the next phase of the project, they won't have to remobilize in order to do that. Um the proposed or the recommended foundations are all shallow footings with slab-on-grade, which uh is about the most cost-effective type of foundation that you're going to construct for one of these buildings. So again, that was also good news that we weren't uh having to do something that would be uh more of a deep foundation. So before I go to the DSS site, does anybody have any questions on? That's the, that's the down and dirty ones over the world on what, what we found in the geotechnical investigation. Full reports included that you can read through, but I can answer any, any questions um that you have on this site. These investigations are important to structural engineers, but uh they might not be the most riveting thing for other people to read. Um if you go to the next slide, you know, I have. So the next slide, slide is the uh, the DSS site. Um as Patrick went over when he was talking through the scope, uh because we're not um building a new building, we're not modifying the existing superstructure or foundations of the DSS building. Uh we're not proposing any new foundations there. So we focused our uh evaluation on this site uh with two borings over by where the proposed um maintenance shop and the Board of Elections uh, you know, uh building is. Um we found that same fill type material that I told you before, that we found between two and a half and four and a half feet on the highway site, we found down to six feet on this site. So um it's a little bit more required excavation and replacement of suitable material, but it's a smaller footprint. So if you have to find uh unsuitable material six foot deep on one of the two sites, this is the preferable of the two because the, the area of excavation is much smaller. Um bedrock was deeper here, it was thirty-three feet down. Uh that's, that's good to know, it's not going to affect um our, our project probably in any way. Uh the grade change, there's next to no grade change out at this site, it's a fairly flat site. So we're, we weren't facing the same uh potential challenge as we were on the other site. Uh but that was where they encountered rock uh in the, in the borings. And again, the recommendation is the same here, shallow footings and slab-on-grade. While we were doing the geotechnical investigation, uh we also went out and um uh did, conducted an environmental survey, some soil sampling. Uh with the intent to uh try to identify those unknown unknowns, the things that would become problems um for uh uh construction. Uh there's a lot of words on this slide, uh it's the soil report that I, that I gave you. Essentially, uh they did find um, it, it was a similar finding of the hazardous materials. Nothing that was going to uh cause any kind of great pains. Um it was actually a fairly clean site for a highway site, especially one with, with fuel uh facilities and or petroleum, past petroleum storage on it. Um and that, that was good news. The um, uh let's see. The contaminants um that they found uh in, on the uh highway garage site, uh all that means for the excavated material is that you can either reuse it on the, the same site or if you have to take it off the site, it's classified as, has to go to non-hazardous landfill. So what usually happens there is they just use it in their daily cover over their landfill stuff. Um that, it's, it's a, it's a few dollars, you know, uh it's, it's not as expensive as removing hazardous material to a hazardous material uh landfill. Um and it's, it's um, it's not going to, not going to adversely impact uh the project. So the, the result of the environmental survey was very positive as well, uh considering the, the use of the site that we were investigating.
So that stuff can go to Rodman, right?
Um not familiar with Rodman, but if it's a.
The dank facility?
But that, yes, it can go to landfill and they normally use that as their daily cover uh when it comes in. So I'm not the environmental engineer, but I can, uh I can answer uh some questions and other questions. If I, if I don't know the answer, I can get back.
How much for it, two and a half feet?
Two different things. So the two and a half to four and a half feet are unsuitable structural characteristics. So uh the material there, um it has cinders in it, you know, uh pieces of brick dust, things like that that uh don't provide good adequate bearing for uh, you know, the, the loading of your, your structural slab and things like that. Uh that doesn't necessarily mean that it's contaminated, that's the structural properties of that upper uh material needed to be removed. The um, the soil that were sampled here, I'm not sure exactly at what levels they were, wh- which, which exact soil samples had the contaminants in them. But I think it was pretty uh pervasive, you know, throughout the, the couple of borings that they looked at. So what I understood from reading the report was that, and what I understood from talking to our environmental engineer, was that any of the material that we excavated, that we were not reusing on the site, had to go to a landfill. Um and you know, to, started a landfill, but it had to be uh uh non-hazardous landfill and generally used as daily cover, was how it was explained to me.
We don't know how much.
Well, we do have a, we did a preliminary grading plan. We haven't done the foundation design yet, so there's going to be some additional excavation there that will be replaced with imported fill. But we did come up with conceptual level numbers from our preliminary grading plan about how much cut, how much imported fill and what, what quantity of fill was going to need to be removed from the site. I can tell you that on the highway garage site, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that was requiring some fill to be removed from the site because of that corner, that's the corner of the site that had to be cut down. So we weren't able to get that completely balanced because we had to make that change with the existing grade. But that's been, that's been included in the, in the cost estimate.
Not to prolong this discussion, but did the other, the Wash Bay borings come back?
Uh, the
The ones that are not back yet?
The report that I, that I handed you, that has all of the soil samples.
I guess there was one page that said some of them, we were still waiting on those, but those came back.
The ones that I, in the report I just gave you?
The new ones today?
That, that, that should have all the soil samples, yes.
There was a couple that had been left out of the big report that you guys gave us.
Uh, yes, I got you. Everything's back now and that's, that's, that's the complete report, yes.
Great. Okay, we're close to the end here. Forward. I can hear the poll. There we go. It's a little bit wavy, but so as Chuck was going through some of that, I, I was just wanting to point out something that Gregory had mentioned earlier when he talked about the cost for the proposed highway garage. Keep in mind too, that cost is just for the building less the site work associated with it. That's how things can kind of get confusing sometimes to people is, you know, you want to make sure you're always natural, everyone here knows you want to be apples to apples. Somebody might be talking about they did a new highway facility and it may have been, you know, X number of dollars a square foot. Well, was that for the building? Was that for the building in site? Was that, you know, what, what did that number encompass? So roughly what we've got is we've got 4.4 million for the new highway garage, but then we've got $2 million in cost for the site work on just that, you know, side of the built East Road there. So, you know, that, that could very easily bring you up to $364 a square foot right there if you were to look at it as a total, you know, site and building. You know, so I, I'm very confident that the numbers we have here, based on where we're at today, are good numbers. Will some of these be slightly higher or lower as we move into design development? Yes, but we're going to monitor that as we go through it. And we're going to track anything that's added that's not in scope and make sure we let the legislative committee know that, you know, if for some reason during the design development, some of these departments are looking for more than what was in there, if it's going to affect the overall cost where we don't have a balance of where we're deleting something and adding something, you know, we'll naturally keep you in the loop all the way through that. I won't go down through every item here, but factor in a 5% contingency overall, total construction cost being 17.2 million. Third-party testing is required by the state. We can't do that and the contractor can't. Those are like compaction tests of your stone and so forth. And it has to be, it can't be paid for by the contractor. Anyone else has to be paid by the owner, the entity doing the work or having the work done so that there's no follow play basically. But naturally we want to incorporate costs like that into the project. And then, you know, as a soft cost, because that would be during construction. And then the other cost in there would be the architectural engineering and construction administration watching over the project all the way from this next phase right through the closeout, making sure that, you know, the as-built are created and you receive all your, you know, operation maintenance manuals and everything and post and warranties are set up and so forth. The number there for the architectural engineering and construction administration is inclusive of what we had already had for the concept phase. So that's for the overall, because that concept phase that you've already committed to, we're looking at that as part of this overall project. So we've included it in that number, even though it's already been basically paid for. Questions on, it's all Patrick and maybe Tim. How much of this stuff can be done in-house? Like the demolition of sign and welding shops and the site work? And any major portion of that be done by our in-house crew?
We, we could, we could do all of it, but I, I will tell you that I'm very concerned about that. And I took Ryan up today to show him, you know, with COVID last year, we did very little road maintenance. With the JCC project that summer, we did very little road maintenance. And every time we defer that road maintenance because we're looking at our crew spending the summer right there. Last two, one they need to do.
My concern is this is prevailing wage, right? So as much as we can do in-house, it's going to be a major savings when we don't have to pay prevailing wage.
And we are planning on, we discussed with Tim, is having them take down the cold storage building. And so that's listed down there under new highway garage. The existing cold storage building, the pole barn, is they're going to take that down and they would take care of that. The sign and welding shops are a little bit more involved. The sign shop actually is built on a steep cliff that's probably 15 feet, about that, 15 feet from the lower edge. And you can see it in the site model, the actual cut. Chuck will pass that around again. But that's going to be a little more involved to take down. The welding shop, we can, you know, look at that again and maybe say, hey, if we can take care of most of it, or maybe some of this comes right down to maybe you can do the trucking, you know, to, it might, we'll, we'll look at some of those.
So the sign shop is, for those of you that look, you saw this vertical wall over here. It looks very small on the, on the model, but it's, I don't know if it's 15 feet, but it's probably every bit of 10 or 12.
Yeah, it's got to be 10, 12.
Something like that.
There's storage underneath.
Yeah, yeah. The front foundation wall of that sign shop actually kind of acts as a retaining wall. Problem is when you take that sign shop away, it won't, it, it doesn't have the, the footers on the back end to resist that overturning. So you, you've got to really be careful how you demolish that sign shop and, and sequence it right. Otherwise you could have an issue with the soil up above it because you're basically taking away a retaining wall. So it has to be sequenced with construction. And if we're going to do what we're talking about doing here, still providing this access to the underside of the existing highway garage behind it because there is a vehicular access to the underside there right behind the existing sign shop and use that area maybe for some auxiliary apartment, we're going to have to tie into an existing retaining wall that's there and extend that retaining wall around the corner. That's worked into the, the site numbers for the, this, the, the estimate for this, this site. But that area would be an area that I would caution against removing that risk from the contractor. I think it would be beneficial to have that within their, within their contract. It minimizes risk to the county and it sequences the work a little bit better with, with the other construction activities.
The other problem with this one, the work, is scheduling so that we don't hinder the contractor or slow the contractor up because he's going to back charge us if we're, he's ready to do something and we're not ready to front it to him. So I'm not saying don't use some hell, just have to be cautious on which, use, use the one that doesn't cost us money.
We'll sit down again, you know, with the building committee, with Tim, with whoever we want to put together there on that little committee. We'll look at, is there anything that wants to affect the schedule? Because we did know the cold storage department could come down before the contractor even gets started if time was permitted, you know. But the, we'll, we'll revisit that.
And we'll have to talk about that in terms of the constructability and the sequencing and phasing of the project anyway. Because when contractors get the drawings, if we say something's existing conditions, it has to be existing conditions, right? So if we're going to take down the cold storage building, when the contractor gives those drawings, that cold storage building shouldn't be shown in the drawing. Or if it is.
It'll be an extra later on.
Yeah, or it needs to have some indication that this is outside of their contract. And the contract limit lines need to be cleared out. So this is all part of moving the project forward. But you're right, it, it's, it's not something to, to, the more moving pieces you move into a project, the more you have to coordinate those pieces, otherwise.
Okay, so last slide here before some questions. This is just overall with the, the schedule going looking at design development, that would be the next phase of the project, July and August this year. Construction documents, September through November. And then bidding the project out in December, which is usually a good time of year. I found out, I've always had good successes. Contractors, some of them haven't, you know, lined up all their work for the following year. That's when most of the jobs start coming out is in January for bid after the holidays. We'd like to get it out before the holidays. They'll have time to look at it and, you know, and go through and put together all their numbers. Looking at awarding the contracts in January. And then this is where, going back to what Gregory said, it's, well, eight times is really pushing hard on the contractors. You've got to get everything submitted for your submittals reviewed. You know, is this store acceptable? If it is, you know, get it ordered and all that. Because everything that we have in our documents has to be resubmitted by the particular contractor because we might say Peller or Anderson windows are equal. They might have an equal window they buy from a certain supplier and we've got to review that before they order it. We're going to review those quickly. I, they've always allowed 30 days to review those. I've never seen, most architects and engineers I've ever seen, they're not going to take 30 days. They don't want to slow anything down. You know, these things can be reviewed as they come in. Review them, get them turned around, get them back to the contractor. If there's, you know, an issue with it, then as soon as we let them know, they can read some of that. From there, it'd be looking at starting construction in March of 2022 and then substantial completion in March of 2023. Makes it sound pretty easy, right?
At a highway garage, you mean?
Yes, everything.
Well, that's both.
Yes, the whole project.
And we'll, we'll have to talk as we go into construction about how we would bid those. You know, and we've, Patrick and I have talked about that is, and I think that's something to decide, you know, with the county as we, as we move it forward. Do you send this out as, as, you know, one collective bid package? Do you separate it, you know, as a, a separate contract between the two signs? You know, does one want to lead the other? Those are all, you know, bidding strategies that we'll, we'll, we'll definitely go into as we, as we move the project closer to completion.
What's the cost of a new, say, say, say the DSS building up there? What's the cost of it per square foot? Let's go per square foot.
I'd have, I'd have to look at that. I don't want to say offhand without having everything in front of me. Because it varies, square foot numbers, people throw them around a lot. And, you know, you've really got to look at, you know, specifically what type of building it is. And, you know, yes, you know, looking at office buildings, you can, is site work involved into it? You know, are you, you know, so throwing out a number is just, like, I instantly just, as we were talking, went back and, you know, we doubled the square footage cost of the highway facility by just putting a site into it. So now somebody could literally say that's a 400 or $364 per square foot to build that rather than, you know, the other number. So I don't know offhand, but it's, it's going to be significantly more because, and especially if you have a urgent site where it's got to be developed and excavated and foundations put in and substructure and all that, you're, you're talking, you're talking significantly more.
I'll tell you that when you look at the Ed Center that we did, there really aren't a lot of pearls on that project. And so when you're looking at office areas, you know, I don't remember exactly where we ended up there, but it was, it was mid 200s, but it was mid 200s in square foot cost. And that was with help from the highway department extending that water line and doing some of the, some of the, not all the site work, but some of the site work. It was a clear delineation. So that was a couple of years ago and that really wasn't that, an excessive cost for the time for the type of building we were doing at 22,000 square feet.
I mean, you, you, you have some costs in here.
This 225 right here for this human services building is, is much less than you would pay for that same building right there. Much, much less.
Yeah, I, I'll say much less, but I don't want to get into throwing around numbers that we don't, we can't.
I mean, the biggest, the biggest concrete guy in here is 350 at the vehicle wash though.
Yeah, I think part of that is because of the, the type of construction it is. And
That would be pretty high.
Yeah, it's a smaller building. You don't have just a wide open space. We're talking about concrete masonry walls with epoxy paint, you know, galvanized mezzanines for, to be able to wash from. It's, that's where you can't, they're non-comparable.
Well, I'm just looking, I'm just thinking my, in my head, if, if you said three, if I said 350 square foot for the DSS building, you'd probably say, well, that's probably high enough. Think that's enough cushion?
I, I think so.
Yeah.
That's enough cushion for a good building?
Yeah.
Just whether.
Yeah, no, it's, and I wasn't trying to evade it at all. I just don't want to
No, I just want to make
Quote it as
No, I don't want to quote it either. I'm just saying is that enough cushion?
Well, well nowadays you're having contractors that are having a hard time committing to longer than 30 days on their quotes. I mean, the, the, over a three-month period, we watched the price of steel come up by 10% every month, just over a three-month period. So the, like you were mentioning earlier with the supply chains and everything, the pricing right now is pretty volatile. The good news is about having Trophy Point on board and it was one of, it was one of the reasons that we, we brought them on the team. This is what they do, you know, they, they're, they're a construction management, construction, construction cost estimating company. And every time they have a bid come in, they go through those line items and they update their information, right? And so that better informs their next estimate and their next estimate and their next estimate. So in this type of bidding environment, that's a really good thing to have a company that is, that, that's what they do. That's their, that's their expertise is construction cost estimating.
Especially with the project of the sides and so many different, you know, we've got different buildings, like you said, from a Wash Bay to office area, you know, completely different, you know, animals.
And I'm personally using them on three different projects for the State University Construction Fund right now. So, you know, they, they, they've done a ton of cost estimating for us. In the last couple of bids that we had come in, we had three of them, three bid openings on one day. And all of the bids were within, two of them were within 2% of the cost estimate. One of them was within 5%. So it was very, very close to what the bid openings were.
And with the, with the current pricing?
With the current pricing. I mean, this was, let's see, what is it now, it's June? I think it was, I think it was March, sometime in March, we had those three, I just remember listening in because they did it virtually. You know, it was, you, you don't go down to Albany anymore to watch the bid openings. You do it over the internet. And they went down through this, this Zoom meeting and I was just, it was, it was a pleasant surprise. But with all the, the up and down of the market, they, they came in very close to their cost estimates.
We just had one where the, why I can't do it for what I did it for. So we gave some different money because we had some problems upfront between award date and disco head date.
Right.
You'll have some language in here so we know how long your bids go for.
Yeah, that's generally in the front end of the, front end documents.
I, I've only had that happen once in 32 years and it was a publicly bid project. And it was clear that they left a large number out and it holds them to, you know, their bid. And you can literally go after them and if the next lowest bidder is $1,000 more, then they're responsible for that. Which in this case, you know, everybody sat down and the owner decided, they made a clear mistake. They, they literally just left half the number out. They, they were tallying all, all these line items, left out, you know, 50% of what the next lowest bidder was. And they said, we're sorry, we can't do it. You know, and they could have gone back to their bonding company and the council, you know, for the client. They said, hey, you know, what are we gaining here? They made a mistake. The next lowest bidder is what? The next lowest bidder is what the, you know, that's, that's what the cost is going to be. And the next lowest bidder actually was within the percent or two of what our estimates were. And this was quite a while ago, but, you know, so it, it happens, you know, sometimes. You just have to deal with it from there. We went on with the project, it got done, it was on schedule, it was on budget, everybody was happy.
But that language is in, is in the front end documents.
Yeah, 30, usually 45 days. We can make it whatever you like. We can, you know, talk to Joan and, you know, whatever.
Look like the award was like January and then they were really going to start and Monarchos it on the.
Yes.
It should be good through that period at least.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We, I, I've seen, I've seen everything from 45 to 90 days, but naturally they're quicker than better. Anything else? Hope I didn't take too much of your time. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, if you think there's going to be questions, you can stick around. If you'd rather have more. If you'd rather want to have a little, I have a conversation with Adam, so we can speak to him however you want.
We're going to take a five minute break, so if anyone.
Concept phase that we've hired them so far. So in order to answer a lot of the questions that we talked about today and really get down to the nitty gritty with this project, we need to move to the next phase, which would be the design phase where we really get into the construction documents, the actual engineering prints where you get into electrical and structural and, you know, all of the details that make a project come together. So we do have that proposal from them. If you're buying it there, it's about 1.5 million dollars, I believe. 1.58 is their quote for engineering services through the end of the project. And I guess with that, you know, based on what we heard from CNS, I'll turn it over to you folks to kind of determine what the next steps are. I'll speak for Joan for a second. This is a real meeting, so you can make motions, you know, if you want to move something forward, you're more than welcome to do that.
Would someone like to make a motion to move this to the design phase?
Are we going to have comments?
Move by Jerry. We'll get to discussion in a second. Second, second by Phil, now we can add discussion.
Well, the reason I asked some of the questions I asked is because I understand that the existing structure and all that, you know, is fine, okay, out there at DSS. I'm going to talk about DSS, not the highway. Highway, that's fine, that whole concept there. But the DSS building they do have is fine issue. I don't believe that it's in the taxpayer's best interest to take that building and gut it out and basically just reform it at a cost of 6.1, where did I write it? 6.6 million dollars, okay? I did some, I did some figuring, you know, and I went big, I went 42,000 square feet. I did $350,000 a square foot, which sounded like a good number because I looked at their documents and I went higher than anything they had or as high for the moment. So comes out to 14.7 million dollars, okay? And with the state reimbursement that we would get from DSS if it was put on the second floor, about 42,000 square feet. I thought they needed 21,000 square feet because that's what it says in here, 21,000 for the human services. Okay, so I just said, okay, bottom floor be 21, top floor be 21, boom. Comes out to 9.1875 million for a brand new build. Not a used building, not using one over again. Then, if you look at the savings that we could also find with bringing DMV up there because we'll have more square footage down below, we won't have to make any purchase offer down there that I've heard of half a million dollars. There's a savings, that brings it down to 8.6 million dollars for that building. Then, we're going to save on the board of elections because they're going to be moving up there. That's $64,000 a year, so if you put that on 10 years, that's 640,000. So we're, we're down to 8 million dollars and we end up with a brand new building. And if there is cost overruns, which I'm not saying there's going to be, but they're, right now, their cost is, if you change the cost to $300 a square foot, okay, from what they're putting down here to 25, so I'm only adding $75 a square foot, okay? So possibly if it goes up to 300, which we don't know because we don't really have an estimate of firm, correct? It's not firm, but 225 is enough.
It's based on comparables.
Based on comparables, okay. Okay, so if it goes up to 300, we're at 7.9, we're almost spending the same amount of money to take an old building, gut it out, refab it, make it look pretty on the outside, and that's about all we're going to get out of it. With this, with the other concept, I'm not trying to present, we're going to be at the same cost, we're going to have twice as much room, we can put more people in that same building than what we have, we won't have to have DMV down there, everybody spread here and there. And here's another, we have to have this other discussion. What are we going to do with DSS while they're gone? Nobody said a word about what to do, where to put them. Nobody has a plan. Does anybody have a plan? Do you have a plan?
We have, we have several storefront options that we can look into again.
Look into. You haven't looked into them, you don't know what it's going to cost. How much does that going to cost us? You know, there you go again. See, I'm looking, if you look at board of elections and say, we're going to have to spend that amount per month, which is quite a bit, it was 5,400 a month. The option right now, I hear, I've heard is tops, plodding, where that vacant space is, oh, then you gotta, then you gotta rehab that, put office space in there, you're going to have to put partitions up and move offices in, you're going to have to have, you know, handicapped accessibility, you're going to have to have all this stuff. We're going to have some costs there to put an office space in for DSS. Okay, so I'm just trying to put out there what I think is kind of common sense, but maybe it's not, maybe I'm off in la la land or something, but to me, if you let DSS where they are and you build a brand new one, you lose that whole year of having to put Jenny Jones and her crew, offices be aging, where would we put them? You know, where are we putting them? We don't know, we don't know what it's going to cost, you know, no. But this way, they stay right where they are, they do, and we build a new building and be done with it. And we got a building that'll probably last for 50 years, you know, if we do it right. At 350 dollars a square foot, you know, I think it should last. And then we take the old building, we keep it, it doesn't have to look pretty, it could be the maintenance shop and it could be storage. We are lacking storage, the hospital's lacking storage. We can make that a stor, cold storage building where they can put files and everything else. I mean, we got to keep everything for 100 years, so stack it in there, you know, it's got a concrete floor and a roof on it, it's good last for a few years anyway. But that's just my perspective, you know, I don't know if it'll go or not go, but that's my way of thinking.
Anyone else have any other comments?
I don't like putting all my eggs in one basket. We just went through a pandemic, we had to separate people out. If we get all of our offices in one building and some things, such as a pandemic comes along, we're going to be totally shut down. It makes no sense. We've got to keep a few things separate.
Anyone else?
I, I, I mean, we had the facilities here except for a lot during the pandemic. We downsized and we made it work, so, and it's just me speaking, I give you a hard time. I don't think everybody being in one place is going to create that great problem if we have none. Because look what we did here and we survived pretty well. And people will use in that, so.
So Jerry, you made the motion and you've been deeply involved, I read the minutes, you've been in all the meetings, and you're comfortable and content with the direction?
I, I am, and the reason for it was, I'll be honest, I believed in the other building. The majority of legislators want to go this direction, so if they're bad or different, I'm giving 100%. And I think this is the right way to go, to be honestly speaking, that we've been kicking this can down the road too long, to put it blunt. You know, you look at the additional expense, we're spending $6 million roughly, and there's just kind of the outlining for highway, which if we built the other building for 12.5, highway wouldn't be included. So that's some of our additional costs. You know, it's, it's, the only savings we have are efficiencies. The more efficient we can become, the more savings, or the better savings we can have in keeping the costs under control. And, you know, it may not be exactly the right way that we're proceeding to do it. Now, I'll be honest with you, we did get rid of a few people up there, which I think helped make it work so DSS and we could bring someone else in, because we did discuss that before about some of the outside agencies need to find their own homes, speaking honestly, because we need to take care of county, and at that point, we didn't want to do that. So we, we kind of solved a lot of problems. I did everything, we've left it up, the department heads, discussion with those, my only thing was, is give them the space they need to function.
Right.
And how they've set it up and this and that, hadn't been involved in it, but we got Jackie replaced by using the old highway building. I can't remember the exact figure on that, what was it, a million something roughly? You know, so, Soil and Water, Jackie's got a house, and then, what was it, USDA, I think sent her in the middle. So I think we've done very well as far as utilizing existing buildings, yeah. It's true that we would be, if we built, you know, properly brick and mortar built, we might get a little bit more longevity out. But I have the same aspect that, you know, if we have to renovate again 30 years and we're doing just that building, it's going to be paid for and cost effective.
Well, I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, but nobody's been more deeply involved in the before, you know, and after than you, and so your, your opinion is something I wanted to hear.
I, I, you know, that's, that's my view. I mean, I, I think we've gotten this far, we chose not to do the other one, so that's gone. We're not discussing that, what if and this and that. I mean, we're at the point now that we either make a decision to move forward and make this stuff come to fruition in the near future.
I, I like what you said about quit, let's quit kicking the can down the road.
Well, I mean, not to be negative and not blaming anybody, we've been at this since 2006.
You're blaming me now.
No, no, I'm talking about, you know.
Just kidding.
But, but you know, the thing is.
Right. It's getting way past on you, right?
Yeah, we should have been, whatever we do, we should have been able to make a decision before this, but not. But I think what we've got is good, it'll work for us, and it solves 90% of our problems.
One, one thing I, I didn't see or understand maybe, and maybe I'm looking at Joan on this, are we going to charge rent to the people that we're putting in the highway garage like we're getting rent now?
Yeah.
Okay, so that should be part of the equation.
Are we charging Soil and Water?
Yeah.
I don't believe we are currently, and I think part of that reason is that she does all the secret work, is Jackie?
She does a lot of work.
She does a lot of work for us, so that's kind of been a lot.
Not much, but. We're getting from, we, we are getting revenue from rural development USDA, but not from Soil and Water.
And that will just.
But you're right, Phil, that, whatever that amount is, say it's, you know, 20, 30,000, it does belong in our annual payment fund.
So the new building discussion was done and had, it was.
Before, a new building?
Yes.
Well, I mean, yeah, we, we talked about it, we updated it, it went from, correct me if I'm wrong, my figure is 8.5 million when we originally looked at it, the 12.5, if we took it under there, that wasn't counting, going ahead and going back through it and checking the structural, make sure it met the codes for now, and the majority felt that this is the direction we ought to have, so that's where we're at. So, I mean, it already feels different, we can still have it, but you're probably, to be honest with you, you're not going to get me to go back. It's just been too, too much. We're here, you know, whatever happened, happened, it's over with. We got to make a decision on what we have in front of us.
Just to clarify one thing, I had said before that the, the CNSB was 1.58 and the actual amount is 1,470,540 dollars.
Minus.
Minus the third party testing and some other stuff, so.
But we've already paid, we've already agreed to pay some of that.
We've already paid you some.
Yes, yes.
The only caveat I would throw in, whatever we decide to do, if we're not going all the way through, let's end it here.
What's that mean, Jerry?
If, if we both go through the design phase, I think we all plan on building, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you for clarifying. You got thoughts, Dick?
You've been involved with a lot of. I like new buildings. I don't think they're grouped everything up on a full screen and build. And what we're looking at here is a highway garage and a DSS. So I think we still got to put the cost for DMV and board of elections someplace so that we've got 100% usable project when we get all done.
Board of elections, the way it stands right now, pass the home.
That's right there, that's right there.
This DMV.
And we put out.
Board of elections up there, you're right.
We put out a, a request and, you know, we'll go from there. We're going to have everything done for very new future, otherwise we're going to have one decision to make cut out of this one.
All right, you ready to vote? I want to favor you move this to design phase. Hi.
No.
Any opposed? Show of hand, opposed, motion carries.
So we will put forward an official resolution entering into an agreement with CNS at the July meeting. In the meantime, I think this acts as, you know, we don't want to delay it any longer, so you guys can get moving, we'll vote on the official contract with Joan and your folks can hammer out the details between now and our July 6 meeting.
7.
7.
As part of that, there would be regular updates from them, CNS, to the county?
Sure, we can, we can structure that, you know, I'll have to look at their.
It's in the proposal, biweekly meetings, yes.
Biweekly, good.
Now, now, who we'd like to establish for those meetings is great with me, you know, if we can come up with a committee, it's usually, you know, three to five people or so, naturally, we're going to be meeting with departments, but if we have a small enough committee where you've got everything covered so that everybody's well representative, but yet not too big, that, you know, it goes from being five months of design to eight months, nine months of design, naturally, we want to move this ahead too, you know, move it ahead expeditiously for everyone. So, but we can go through all that and establish for some of the particles.
Would you be opposed to doing what you did today at certain points?
Oh, not, not at all, no.
For everybody?
Yep, yep, oh, definitely, yeah. I've done it in the past, some people like, you know, like that, and that's fine, yes, yeah. Yeah, I can present to the whole legislative committee and the public, you know, as you feel that at certain points we can delay what those points would be, yeah.
And it could be a meeting that isn't in, which is optional for any legislator that wants to.
We reach this page and it's in there, you know, you get past the horses, not be delayed all the time.
It makes me feel a lot better, honestly, because good, bad, or indifferent, people's comments are their comments and their thoughts, and, you know, it's one thing that, you know, you respect everybody's thoughts and comments, you all get to, everybody gets together and we decide where to move from there, and we've got something rather than moving ahead and then having to go backwards. So I, I think that's a great idea, yeah. Thanks, Ben.
Great, thanks.
I don't want to take any more of your time if you have anything else to cover, but we really appreciate it. For both, I haven't met in the past, it's nice meeting you, I look forward to working with you. You know, naturally, you'll see myself and Chuck at the forefront, but there's a lot of other people you're also going to see, you know, passing through that are going to be, you know, working with us on developing this.
And as you go, I'll see, Chuck cleans up, well.
How about that? See, nobody says that about me. Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Ryan, I'm going to leave the rest of the copies over here, and this is a fairly good paperweight, somebody knows.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You're doing great.
Okay, next, Wes, is a presentation regarding the Don't Play Community Center. So, is there someone here with a presentation?
Nope, I'm going to be doing it.
You were the presenter?
You got it.
This is going to take two hours.
Yes, if I'm doing it, it's going to take two hours. The, the financial plan?
Yes.
That we can certainly. Yeah, that's a good question. So before we get on to maybe to the, to the community center, I did hand out to everybody the financial plan for the CNS project that we were just discussing. You know, obviously, I, I feel very confident that we can afford it. I wanted to provide a updated, you can see this updated 6/21/21, because the ones I had given you guys in the past were around $15 million, I wanted to give you a new one that reflected the exact estimate from CNS's report, 18.8 million. So basically, this is, you know, the different options for how you would go about funding it. We do need to add in the how you pay for it section, the incoming rent that we could expect from USDA, but as you can see, you know, we do need to find a little more space in our budget there for, you know, paying after you do 20 years or 30 years, but we're still very close. And we've got, I mean, in all reality, folks, we've got a lot of revenue that has come in over the last two years, and we have a lot of additional revenue that will be coming in. And we've been quite conservative on sales tax, and, and so I really feel comfortable that, that we can make this work. What you, what the board will have to decide is, once we know the exact number, right, when every project is, well, really before, once we have the bid numbers, we'll have to go out to bond, and then at that time, you'll have to decide how much of fund balance you want to use for down payment versus, you know, do you want, you know, depending on interest rates at that time, how much do you want to bond? So we'll have to have those discussions, and then likely in 2023 or 2024, the first payments of the bond will come due, and that's when we'll have to make sure that we have that carved out in the budget appropriately. So this is a sketch, we're going to have to have more work to do on this in terms of, you'll have to talk about down payment, you'll have to talk about interest rates, and we'll have to talk about 20 years versus 30, or you could do, you know, you 15, 25, there's lots of different options for terms and conditions when it comes to bonding. So those are definitely future discussions that we're going to have to have. I also included a second page, which is basically high level, we have, once we have the exact square footage and utilization, we'll be able to go to our consultant, Vaneski Group, and they'll be able to tell us exactly what DSS is going to be able to chip in towards the project. But any space that's utilized by DSS, you know, if it's 100% of their space, then we get 70, you know, around 70% reimbursement. For the common areas, we'll have to do time studies to see, you know, how much space, you know, how much space dedicated to DSS compared to OFA, but more or less, you know, we can't forget that they're going to be contributing towards the annual payments. So the state will be contributing towards the annual payments, their portion of the bond payment and operating maintenance of building, so those are.
At this point in our life, with what you've put there, I think we can overcome most anything with a down payment.
Yeah, yeah.
At this point in our life, and in particular, with the prices of everything going up so much, or sales taxes going up so much for this year, to put more down payment on that, so.
Yeah, and I cut it off.
And I'm, you know who I am, I personally don't think there's a problem.
Nope, I agree, and I cut it off at 3 million, but we could easily, you know, you guys have seen our fund balance, we can do more than 3 million down payment if that if you wanted to do. It's all about, you know, what that annual payment is, like anything you buy in your life, you got to figure out what that annual payment's going to be and how does it fit in your budget, so. But I feel very confident at this point that, that we'll be able to make this happen, to think that we have the annual. Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Exactly.
Yep, I agree with that. And we know for certain now that number three wind project is going forward, they've started construction, because we still have a lot of hope about the river and the Montessori projects that are coming on board. I was just chatting with Brittany today, she couldn't even give me an estimate of annual revenue because they're getting more and more every day, and we kind of set it up depending on different acres, different megawatts, so it was tough, but I think it's safe to say we're going to have a fair amount. Right, and more in revenue as well, so, okay. Blue County Community Center. So I was able to chat with everybody individually about this project back in the wintertime. Since then, we've, we've had some more discussions and flushed some more things out, but, you know, we're at the point where this project, you know, is really looking for a sponsor. You guys have seen some of the preliminary financial figures that I put together, and there's a lot of folks in the community at the state level, you know, in terms of grants and, and public and private funding that can pull this project together, but what it lacks, in all honesty, is a sponsor. It lacks someone that's saying, yep, we own this, we're putting it in the ground, and then you can allow some of these other elements to come together. So the goal of this today is to provide a high level overview of the project, everything from, well, pretty simple, what, where, when, and how is what we're going to try to discuss, and then I'd like to, to put it in the laps of the legislators and, and you guys kind of discuss and figure out, you know, what happens next, what level of support, if any, does the county see here, and what can we bring back to some of these folks that have been pushing this for quite some time. So let's start with what? What is a 35,000 square foot community center? This is the first floor plan there. It includes daycare facility, classroom, something we've talked quite a bit about, a community kitchen, dining area, we would plan to move our OFA meal site up there, I mean, that's, that's been discussed, but it would make a lot of sense. That would move from Maple Ridge. Fitness center, community rooms, indoor turf field, gymnasium, indoor walking track, playground, and other outdoor recreational facilities. I do have the blueprints brought up if, if you guys really wanted to get into close details, but here's what's proposed, first floor, second floor. What they've got here, now, now, this was all completed by Don't Play, this was not completed by the county, but these are their preliminary engineering. You've got entryway here, community rooms off to the side, kitchen area here, here's your daycare classroom area here, obviously, facility locker rooms. You go into the multipurpose field turf. I had talked to the YMCA, they were very positive about this, YMCA in Watertown, they told me that just based on overflow from their facilities alone, they feel they could book this on a fairly regular basis, almost book it out for the year, just based on overflow from Watertown. So the demand, I mean, I'm not in the recreation business, but talking to their executive director in Watertown, they felt that there was enough demand in the region for an indoor turf field.
They entered into a contract for that?
What's that?
They didn't, the Y in Watertown would enter into a contract to rent this for at least a year?
Nope.
No.
Well, we, we, let me, we can talk about operations in a minute, but the reason I wanted to talk to the Y was, okay, if we built this, would we even have enough business to, to keep it going?
Sure.
Their analysis, just based on, they run the, the Old Altman Gold Facility on Coffeen Street and, did they have another turf anywhere there? I think they're, they're renovating in downtown, they're going to have some more space, but they said they're booked out solid, and in fact, they could use more space, so there's certainly demand, was the point I was trying to get from them, is, you know, is this demand in our region? They confirmed that they felt that there was.
Okay.
Gymnasium also on the first floor, multi-use gymnasium, you see volleyball courts, basketball courts, and then some folding stands there, so nice concept.
Before you go, can you speak to the kitchen again for just a second?
I don't have a lot of details. It's a twenty cc.
No, I don't have any details with you. When you move Maple Ridge down there, how many people can go there for lunch? And where would they eat?
Yeah, they'd eat in these community rooms here.
In community rooms, okay.
Yep, so you got a community room and right across from the kitchen, that's eleven, over eleven hundred square feet. I don't think we rent much more than that for seating at Maple Ridge. In fact, rather less.
I don't think the attendance requires it right now, yeah, okay.
Second floor, so you got staircase here, elevator, I believe, and that brings you up to the second floor. I mean, again, this is just concept phase, similar to what we were just talking about before. You've got fitness center here, on both sides, the green fitness center. Group training and yoga studio, and then this is a track that wa-, that walks all the way around. This middle is open for balls and such that may be flying through the air.
How big is the track around you though? I can see it there.
Tenth of a mile, I think it said in the.
I thought that was too, Dick. I was gonna say the same thing. I thought ten laps was a mile.
Yeah.
But I don't have it off, on the top of my head.
It's in that book that gives.
Yeah. So this is, this is all, you know, their concept, but this is basically, I, I, I could see something similar to this. When I lived in Ohio, I, we had a YMCA in town. It was almost identical. I mean, it was the exact same, except for they had a pool. But the very similar setup, so it seems fairly standard to me, at least. Concept what? This is kind of some renderings of what it could look like from the outside, so fairly simple. Who? Well, a lot of people. We're hoping, you know, the, the thought process here would be a broad partnership of community entities. Again, like I said, what we're missing is that leadership piece, you know? Who's gonna get this thing across the, the finish line? The pitch here would be, you know, what role could Lewis County pay, play in leading that? Funding will be sought from grants, public contributions, and private contributions. We'll go over kind of the, the more detailed finances in a bit. Remaining funding would be fine, provided through a bond by the county. So this is where the, the proposed plan really falls on us. Whatever can't be put together through the funding package, there has to be somebody at the end of the day holding the bank saying, yep, we're gonna put this forward. The request is, will the county play that role as the ones that will ultimately own the project?
Has there been a wild guess at what, go in there for a figure on remaining funding?
Yes, yep, and I'll get to that at the end, yep. That's in the how phase.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Double Play will operate the new community center via MOU with the county. Double Play will pli-, will pay Lewis County a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year to lease the facility, similar to JCC and the new education center. So very similar relationship. We own the building. We sign an MOU with Double Play for them to operate the building. So we don't want, at least my opinion is, we don't want county staff in, over there. We want them to staff it. We want them to maintain it, you know, and we want them to keep it going. You know, this is, our, our contribution is the capital cost. Our contribution is not an annual subsidy for operations. It's up to them to keep the lights on and keep it going. Concept where? Lampier Street in Lawville. This is the site that has been traditionally what everyone has considered when they've been talking about this project. Double Play already has an option to purchase the property, so that means it's somewhat locked down, and Phase One environmental is complete on the property. That's can come back clear. So you kind of see it without the, the, the building there, and I'm gonna show you the, the concept in a minute. But basically, this spot here would be, would provide the entryway and then a secondary entryway over here. So you can kind of see that, where you've got Lampier Street here that comes to a corner. This is how you kind of enter, and then there's kind of a secondary pedestrian entryway over here.
But those secondary side streets, have you talked to the village about maybe upgrading them a little bit?
I have had no conversations with the village. I don't know what Double Play, you know, when they were doing this concept, I'm not sure.
That can be added.
But, but yeah, they're, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be a neighbor over here pretty soon, so. So, you know, one of the aspects here is before-school and after-school programs. In Watertown, the YMCA calls it SAC, at least they did when I were kids. But, you know, if you're gonna have kids there before and after school for, for daycare, you know, at least playground, some type of outdoor rec is, is an expectation. You know, all this stuff, the gazebo, the ball fields, the walking trails, you know, that's a lot of probably things that maybe are Phase Two or Three type things. Getting the facility up with a little playground, I think, and obviously, parking lot would be more than enough to get us, to get us going.
Ryan, you talked about babysitting. Would that be for all, could that be for all day?
I'm not sure. They'd have to, my guess is that Double Play would have to probably contract that out with, with Handelman or some other type of agency. But you can see they've built, you know, in the concept here, you've got three, I believe, three large classrooms. So, you know, you could, for pre-kindergarten or, or daycare, there's quite a bit of space here for that, some administrative offices. So I think they're, you know, they're planning on having that utilized quite a bit. Concept when? Now, this is, you know, really dependent upon a lot of factors that, you know, and really what the board wants to do here, but assuming that we want to get this going as quickly as possible, we'd very, pretty much be on a similar schedule to what we just talked about with CNS. You know, we'd have to really get into the nitty-gritty of design through the summer, bid the project, you know, sometime in the winter, project construction in the spring, and project completion in the spring of twenty twenty-two, similar to what we just talked about. How? Here's the, the how isn't. How do we pay for it, which is the most important thing? So, Dick, you were asking before, they have a new engineered estimate as of last Thursday, I believe, the eighteenth, that puts the total project cost at thirteen point six five million dollars. Here are some of the funding sources that Double Play has already lined up themselves. Again, you know, if we take on this project, we're knocking on all these doors and making sure that the commitments are there.
Who is Dyson Foundation? I'm not familiar with.
Dyson is the Dyson vacuum.
Oh, cleaners.
There's apparently a, a local tie to that company that is willing, you know, has pledged some foundation fund to it.
And that's a grant with no payback?
All these would, the goal of all these would be that they would take right off the top. You know, they'd take right off the top of the cost. Now, some of them are question marks. The R E D C, you know, look at R E D C, D R I, or New York State. My personal belief, talking to Michelle Ledoux, talking to some folks, you know, with New York State, I think we should have no problem. If we were really committed to this project, I think we'd do quite well in R E D C and landing some grant money. I think probably one point five is probably a little low, because they will fund up to twenty percent of the project. So you could potentially get more. Some of these other things are not necessarily set in stone. I mean, look at the, the individual donation, you know, that's something that's been thrown out there. I have never rung that person, you know, we, those are question marks that, you know, if the county takes on this project, we've got to flush those out. Town of Lawville and Village of Lawville, you know. My personal opinion, and I, I know some of the legislators feel the same, is it's gonna be in Lawville. You know, these, these folks need to step up as well, you know, they have money too. They have windmill money. And so, you know, there needs to be a collaborative effort here from all the surrounding towns and villages that are gonna, that are gonna benefit. And then a capital campaign was something that Double Play had put in there as, you know, hey, we think, you know, in terms of other donations, and folks that want to see this go forward, they think they can pull together another five hundred thousand. Those are all ifs, 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 ifs. The bottom line is, whatever is left is what potentially the discussion today is, you know, are we willing to cover that, whatever is left, basically? So assuming we can get it to seven point five, maybe we can do better in terms of R E D C or downtown revitalization. You know, maybe we can do better with some of these foundations. I don't know. But, you know, assuming we can get it, yes, Dick, great.
The Dyson Foundation, from what I've talked with Dan, is flush with money.
Okay.
So he, because of the pandemic, there was not much going on, so there wasn't much funding going on. So he feels that, you know, he might be able to get more out of that. And the one million individual donor is, an individual donor who became very wealthy, was, was a graduate of, what, seventy-three, four, class of?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-nine? So he, he basically said he'll, he'll do a million. I don't think there's any doubt there.
If the county.
If the county, yeah, if the county comes up with their, you know, funding.
So, you know, you can see here that they, they've tried to do a good job lining up some things, but, but if you left right there, you're, you're still not at, you know, you're still not at the project cost. There needs to be somebody at the end saying, you know, we're pushing this thing across the finish line. And that's kind of what the request of the county is. How do we pay for it? Again, so if you take that figure, seven point one five, and this is basically the same spreadsheet we just talked about for the other project. But, you know, you've got options. You can put some money down from fund balance, one million, two million. And, you know, you've got bond options here, twenty-year, thirty-year. So those, you know, if you've got a twenty-year bond with no money down, you're looking at about a four hundred thirty thousand dollar annual payment. A thirty-year down, a thirty-year bond no money down, three hundred and twelve. And obviously, that changes if you put a million down, two million down, you know, that, that can change. How do we pay for it? Well, we're gonna hopefully get, we are gonna get, you know, as part of the MOU, Double Play has put in their operating budget, which I've, the, the projected operating budget, which I've passed out to everybody, they're committing to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's a, it's in their budget as mortgage payment, so that would be their commitment to the capital costs. The annual payment to Double Play, we already have in our budget twenty thousand dollars a year. I think that we can easily put that towards the bond rather than towards Double Play. The OFA meal program, that fifteen thousand is basically what we pay at Maple Ridge. We would not want to be paying that at Maple Ridge. We'd do it over at Double Play, which would save us. And then the number three wind pilot, this is a new pilot that's starting in twenty twenty-three, but their construction has begun just the last week or so. And since we last talked, the megawatts of that has actually increased. It was two hundred and eighty thousand. It's up to three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars the first year of that payment, and it goes up two percent every year thereafter. So utilizing that number three pilot, basically, that puts us, all things considered, at about four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars of funding set aside. Again, this is without tax increases, this is without taking money from other parts of the budget. This is money that either we don't have yet, but plan to have in terms of the number three pilot, or payments that would come from, you know, other things that we're doing that would be reallocated towards this. Remaining to be paid, as you can see, we're in the green here, so basically, remaining to be paid is, if you take these two numbers, right, subtract this number, and you get, you know, this here. So we're in the green any way you look at it, but there's no doubt about it. The only way we're in the green there is because of that number three pilot, you know? That's how you're basically paying for this, more or less, would be through the number three wind farm pilot. So that is kind of a concept on, on how we would pay for it. Last question is why? You know, what's the purpose of this whole thing? I'm not gonna get too deep into that, because everyone that I've talked to, I think, understands that it is a good idea. The question is not, is it a good idea? The question is, what's the county's role? And, but just to hit these real quick, community physical wellness and mental wellness, obviously very important. Population retention and attraction, you know, we talk a lot about keeping our young families here, you know? This is something that you find. You find community centers like this in a lot of developing places. It's not something that we have yet in our, in our community. Youth activity and diversion, you know, giving kids a place to go before school, after school, where they maybe won't get into mischief. Childcare, something that we've talked a lot about. And then economic development is another one. We did have our planning department a few years ago did an economic impact analysis using economic impact software. And at that time, the annual economic impact was around eight hundred thousand dollars in terms of, you know, people traveling, people coming to Lawville, people buying more things, you know, adding this value to our community. You know, momentum, baguettes momentum, growth, baguettes growth, that whole thing. So with that, questions and discussion, I know we threw a lot at you in a short amount of time. But what I, like I said, I really, my goal today was just to put this on the team for you folks and, and kind of let you guys discuss.
Yeah, Ryan, if I could for a minute, I don't know if anybody else got phone calls today, but before I got out of bed, I got a phone call. Then I got nine more in the next hour.
Nine more?
One person was eighty-four years old, one was my age, which I'm not gonna disclose. Couple were middle-aged, one was nineteen, just got out of high school last year. And surprisingly enough, none of them from the Village of Lawville. Because one of my fears was, well, this is gonna be in Lawville. This is gonna be all for Lawville in the outlying communities, you know? These people, some of them were from Lance Falls area down that way. Nobody from Osceola or Harrison. But they were all supportive of, of the project. And then the last call I got was from Rob Gross at school. And one of the costs you don't have in here yet are one of the incomes. He says that they're going to Watertown and Utica for a lot of indoor stuff that they're paying decent money for. On top of that, they draw twenty, thirty, forty people, which spend money and do things for them. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, the calls I got at least were positive.
Dick, as, as you described, I'm in the outlying area.
Yep.
And I looked at their participation numbers by town.
Yep.
And, excuse me, I did a quick on it, but the participation was within ten miles of Lawville.
Yep.
Was sixty-nine percent.
Yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
And, and I, I'm, I'm a little, I like the idea, but I'm a little concerned about the county spending six and a half million dollars for something that is not going to benefit the entire county as a whole.
Well, it might, Phil, because if we can do something to our drug problem that's killing us and eating our lunch with law enforcement and the DA and everything else, there might be some costs there, and I'm just saying there might be, that would save our tax base, because we're paying for money in other places.
And can I add one more thought for you is, you still have a school in Aristotle, and I think they would participate in some of that indoor turf stuff.
I think so.
I think that his draw, his draw is to, is to include the schools and some of this, and I think.
Why aren't they now? Why aren't they coming now?
Because they don't have it.
There's a facility there.
Where?
Double Play doesn't have a facility now?
They don't have the, they don't have.
I know they don't have turf, but they got a facility.
They have a facility, and that's.
And zero people have come from, well, my neck of the woods, or Jerry's, or.
Says others. Others ninety-six on here.
Oh, wow.
Other. I mean, it's five point four percent.
What would you say if I had you for six and a half million dollars to do something up in Diana?
If, if it was logical, I wouldn't have a problem with it, though.
Oh, no, great.
I did ask Ryan for that. I said, what we're gonna give here, if we give anything to buy their homes, all the towns.
Exactly right.
It didn't show up.
They have utilization numbers.
I'm talking about every town get it. If they want to join, it's gonna benefit from it. They kick the money back there, otherwise they use it for their stuff. I talked to everybody through my monthly meetings. They don't want us to spend taxpayer money on this stuff. And what I proposed to you before, and so we're gonna have this discussion tonight, is, why are we picking certain ones? If we want to give money, give it to everybody that could benefit from it. And it's their choice whether they want to join, or they want to use it for where they're gonna be. Because it's just like Phil said, when people work out of county all the time, there's a slim, no chance those kids down there are gonna get up here. I'm sorry, and I'm not being negative. And the other thing is, why, why are we picking who wins and who loses? And the second thing is that, if it's so great, then it needs to be funded privately. If it gets off the ground, fine, fine, and we'll rent and do what we can as far as that contribute. But to stick with a six or seven million dollar debt, we got one building. We may be empty. So maybe we ought to hang around and see what happens over there. Maybe they can use that one. And I tell you what, I believe you get the people in, the whole public can have a discussion. You're not gonna hear the same thing you're hearing here. And furthermore, this ought to be put on a referendum for fall. Let the taxpayers decide instead of us on this, because it's just their calling. They're trying to bombard people. It's election year and everything else. And if it's been so good, then why hasn't it been built by?
There may be just a. There may be just a stigma of what, the little thing, it was on the news the other day, and it might have been a misstatement. It says a community center for the Lawville.
Well, that's pretty much what it's gonna be.
That's what it said in a little news release.
You know, I don't have a problem supporting it, but I have a problem supporting it at six and a half million dollars. But I, I could support it at what Double Play wants to be, a hundred and twenty thousand a year, or something like that, maybe, and that would be the max, but.
It's obvious they're not gonna make the noping, that's why they need a cash cow or a sugar dandy.
It, it is a nice project, it really is, but.
So if you, if you take out what the project is, the uh, was it the planning department did the economic analysis? They're saying it could benefit eight hundred thousand dollars annually. Say they even, say that is even half as much. So it could bring in four hundred thousand, and we're paying two fifty, so we're making one fifty. So regardless of what it is, it's an investment, if you're only thinking about it monetarily.
Why not build three, one north, south, and central, and then everybody can go to one?
So three thirteen million dollar projects?
No, I mean, do you need that?
Well, you do.
I guess the thing is, we have summer school down there where the kids get the place, so maybe we ought to hire someone to put in those schools, so the kids go there in the evenings.
I think it's more about the turf, it's these large indoor turf that people.
Yeah, it's, I'll be honest with you, it's gonna be great, they're gonna put four forty thou, uh, what, four thousand a month in. Let them sign a contract that if we build it, that's what's gonna happen. I guarantee you, you won't get it, in the same way the investors you've got up there. It'll surprise me if those investors put the kind of money in there to listen. Um, I, I just, I mean, to be honest with you, I think it'll go refer.
You know, when you're talking about the economic impact, you're not talking necessarily eight hundred thousand coming to the county. You're talking eight hundred thousand spent on the county, of which we would get sales tax from. So it's not like that economic impact is coming directly back to us, although it does definitely help offset, you know, but.
Who's putting maintenance in, because I didn't see any maintenance up there.
Maintenance is uh, in Double Play's budget, they'd have to cover that.
What's it at, I mean, I don't remember.
Can I borrow your thing?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I believe in the concept and stuff like this, but I just don't believe it.
So what is doing now?
Maintenance is ten thousand dollars, um, which, you've got ten thousand and utilities at forty thousand, insurance at fifteen thousand. So their, their operating budget for the facility, operating cost first year is four hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Beyond the building, wouldn't we be insuring? They can't insure something they don't own.
We would have to insure it.
Yeah, we would, yeah, we'd have to, yeah.
Well, and take that out there, so that's another cost.
Okay, then they can pay us, you know, a hundred and thirty-five instead of a hundred and twenty.
Does the attorney have any input to this?
Uh, I, these are pledges, so we certainly would wanna have these people locked in in terms of their commitment, and what do we do if they don't pay? That's gonna fall on us, I assume. Um, there are private public partnerships, but I, you know, we're assuming that Double Play is gonna get this, but I think if we're building the building and we want it to be a community center, then you may have to go out to RFP to see who's going to actually manage it and want it, and it may not necessarily be double play.
Thank you, Dr. But I'm getting into costs, I think conceptually, this is a great idea, and I like this idea a lot. Um, I did get a call from a constituent, a senior citizen woman in my, in my district, and you know, we're kind of close to Lawville, it's not that far away, but she said that she would like to see something like this get expanded. Looking at the designs, the things that were, I was thinking of in my mind, two groups, we're gonna make good use of the facility like this. One is homeschoolers, or homeschool groups, and another would be private sports leagues. And thinking about in the last year, what we saw happen in the schools, a lot of parents went to homeschooling, and a lot of them aren't gonna be coming back to the public schools. They're thinking about where can I send my kids for sports leagues? Where can I send my kids for the after-school activities, the things that they were used to through the public school system? Is there room for that in the private sector, essentially? And I know in Lawville, or in Adams, there's a um, a facility a lot like this, it's a privately owned facility, and they have private sports leagues, you know, you get your kids enrolled, and it's kind of like a little bit more than what we had when we were kids, it's much more competitive, they do more traveling. That's the direction it's going in, some kids are just doing that instead of public sports. And that's, a facility like this would make sense. And I, I understand the point too about, yes, it's in the village of Lawville. I think if you build it, and if it's large and it's a nice facility, it will be a magnet for the other towns. Um, and I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Jerry, you know, it's, it's a little bit like the discussion we had about resource officers, what do the other places get? Well, you know, we don't, the town agreement's not gonna get a facility, but we don't really, we're not, we don't have space for a facility like this. You're only gonna get one of these in a county like Lewis, because we're too small. Something like, something like this is gonna happen, you're only gonna get one. Maybe Jefferson County could have three or four, or five.
I agree with you. But if we're gonna spend that kind of money, I would like to give a little bit to my towns down there in villages to do what they feel's right for them.
No, and I'm looking back to my.
Whether it's on their park, whether it's to finish their ball field. And the other thing about homeschool, now, they have paid taxes, so why can't they use that facility?
No, I agree, absolutely.
So that's a question, so.
That's a state policy issue, but yeah.
This project that everybody's gonna come, but we might be able to approach the schools and say, hey, you know, they're paying taxes too, what can they have for sports or after hours? So um, let's reach out and look at all this stuff.
Yeah.
Not just go, I, I just don't think what we're seeing, the money's gonna be there that's proposed. And the other thing is, I'm sorry, but I don't think we ought to be picking and choosing who wins and who doesn't. That's just me personally.
I guess I got a question too, and maybe I'm looking at them all wrong. We're looking at a fifteen to twenty million dollar building project for the county, putting out a bond for that. If we did this, we're putting out a bond for that. The hospital is still looking at a bond to do their addition renovation. Does it come to the point where all of a sudden, we've got more going out in our rating or whatever, but doesn't look as good as it did?
No, we are in a position to borrow about as much as we want. I mean, you get to a point where if you wanna do more projects, then you're gonna have to find a limit, but we also have more money coming in with, you know, big wind projects and solar projects over the next few years. And we've been far too conservative on sales tax and budget, so we're consistently having more money. So I don't, I, I think it's a good question, it's a very good question. My answer is, we should be fine. And on the revenue side of the equation, I don't have any worries about us making these payments.
Right. But with what Tom just said, think about it, we'd have, we'd have bonds of sixty million dollars roughly, and we got a budget of a hundred, well, you know, combined, I guess. That's a substantial debt load for a budget of a hundred. I understand what you're saying about paying for it, but it does not look good to owe sixty million dollars.
I think it's a weak debt load, considering we've had a decade of one percent interest rates and have done nothing. That's my personal opinion.
Oh, it'd be young. Brian, in your cost estimate here that you've got, you've got the total funds available for eighty-one, and then you've got a hundred and sixty-eight three oh two, if we do a thirty year. Do the grant sees across that, that's, that gives us that above.
Right.
So why don't we take the one sixty-eight three oh two and divide like Jerry and Phil wanna do and give it to the towns? And that's some of our window money, so that passes it around to everybody in the, in the county.
And they don't wanna contribute it back in? I don't care, but at least everybody benefits. Or I just don't feel it's gonna happen, and it's nothing against Lawville, I think it's a great project, but it just, I don't think we should pick and choose. If it's so great, it should go on its own, whatever body else has to do.
I mean, is there another option to choose from? You think you should have pick and choose, but I mean, like, I haven't heard from people about anything else that could offer what Double Play is offering.
Well, I think you're hearing from certain people. I think if we put this out public like we're doing now, and we asked our input, I think we're gonna see a hell of a lot different than what I'm hearing now. Because I did take the time to ask my towns hypothetically. You know, we're talking about investing in the project and this and that, what would you want me to do? What would you consider? Um, and I told them roughly what it was, and I was just at a million dollar figure. Um, and it was pretty much, if you're gonna do that, we would rather see it, because we know how to use it.
What does they do so?
If we got needs for it.
Do they have any needs that they would consider?
Well, I mean, you look at all these.
I just ask you because I.
And I'll pick, well, Tom looks unfamiliar. They're lacking from putting all the lights on in their ballpark. Okay, they got a grant, we got a forty-four thousand dollar grant to start the system, but since then, they haven't been lucky on the grants and stuff. So, you know, it's a small town, two hundred and some odd thousand dollar budget, this, that, and everything else. Another thirty thousand dollars is a hell of a lot to raise for the people. And, you know, then we pick, and we're gonna give X amount away for building buildings and stuff, which honestly, and it's not negative, it's just that more than likely, half of these people are not gonna be used. For one is.
I just, I hope that.
If you gotta be a member, which you do, we couldn't even really get the village of poor life when they were down there, they helped fund us. So it's gonna take, even after it's bought, it's gonna take people in memberships, and it's gotta grow for them to even be able to pay for this. So the thing is, I'm not convinced it's there, and I'm not sure none of the costs are easily located on the court. Yeah, it's like this, if it's free, everybody wants it, like getting it from home, hell no.
So, so let me, let me throw this out there a little differently, because I think I wasn't as thoughtful with Phil than uh, uh, Tom's question, sorry. Uh, we've run budget surpluses the last few years. Last year, we ran a very big budget surplus. We have stimulus money coming in, we have a fund balance that, quite frankly, is getting very high. Um, we work very hard to keep operational expenses in check. We don't grow the operational budget of the county. If you look across the board, other than state mandates that grow, we have done a great job. Our highways portion that of the tax levy has gone up like three percent in six years. Our, you know, each of our operational aspects, we really work hard to keep in check. So we've got tons of green energy projects coming on board, we've got an already large surplus, we have an already large fund balance. I think another way to ask the same exact question is, what are we gonna do with all this money? I mean, we have to start thinking about that, because I can, I mean, I can operationalize it, but I don't think that's what we want. We want an operational county government that is in check and where it belongs. But, you know, eventually, we're gonna have to get to the point where we have to have some outlet for some of these funds.
That, that money you're discussing was contributed by everyone in the county.
Yeah, I agree.
And we, our first obligation is to take care of the county first. Via what we did this afternoon with upgrading our facilities to make them proper, that, that's our first obligation. But again, everybody contributed to that fund balance. And everybody should get a piece of that fund balance.
Sure.
Properly, in, in my opinion, but again.
Very much of that fund balance is sales tax money exited, because we were conservatively.
Right, exactly, yeah.
For a few years ago.
I thought we discussed of a fund coming out of our fund balance for the towns and villages. If they had a project like Jerry's Light project, that we would look at helping them out and stuff.
And a community fund.
Yeah. So.
Number three wind is.
Right, so I mean, we, we can contribute to these other communities, we were gonna have some kind of a penalty with the projects and fund to it, so I don't see it like we're leaving them out totally yet. You just can't fund this project in a small community, you know. Lawville's about the smallest you can have to fund it. And as you can see from their records here, it benefits a lot more than the people that live in the village of Lawville.
Well, that's part of the referendum.
So could you reach out to the schools and see, in our county, to see if they'd be interested in using a facility like this?
Well, there's, I mean, my thoughts help here. I think there is value in this project. Um, I'm not comfortable that these numbers that um, that they're presenting are solid. You know, the REDC, so what I, what I would like to see is, I would like Double Play to get some firm numbers of what they can actually come up with. Talk to the town of Lawville, get an MOU from the town of Lawville, the other towns. Put in the CFA application to REDC for the full twenty percent instead of the one point five. You know, the, the marketing, the capital campaign, you know, have them talk with it, with an effort to actually, you know, see what they can come up with and get some real numbers here before, you know, I think we need some real numbers from them on what they can actually come up with before we can have a discussion on how much the county has to come up with in order to uh, see the thing go. That's well put, Larry. And in addition to that, when we do our thing with the buildings, we're gonna have a firmer foundation on how things are gonna proceed for cost wise, so.
You know, and I, you know, I have Osceola, you know, Aristotle, Osceola.
Yeah.
You have the town of Lewis.
I can't see Montague coming up here.
I would be the dear bring this up in.
Well, I mean, I feel you have to, and it's a discussion, I don't care one way or the other. But on the same aspect, the question I asked, and what I got, is more than likely they wouldn't be up here, because it's a half an hour off and a half hour. And most people, let's get real, work outside the county. So what's gonna happen to those kids if they gotta be transferred a certain distance, so? That's where I'm coming from, looking at it somewhat realistically.
Particularly on.
I, I do think it's a good idea, but on the same aspect, I guess one of the questions, instead of putting that kind of money in, could it be done in phases? And see how it goes, instead of jumping in all hot? Because if it doesn't go, we're stuck with X amount of dollars invested in the building. And no offense, we just finished all, or we're, we just took on the project of all the buildings we need.
Well, in a.
And it's not gonna sell real well enough, no offense, if nobody's using it. You might be able to rent it, but I don't, that's the thing, I don't think we should be insulted. I mean, I can live with Larry, but on the same aspect, I think you need to reach out to the taxpayers, and we need to have a discussion, because being a smart bottom, if we're collecting all this money, maybe we're raising too much through taxes.
That's a good point too, because we're all getting positive supportive calls. I've gotten several, I've gotten emails, but they're all coming from one source. They're all coming from Double Play and the people that utilize it. You know, it's not a true representation of county, you know, resident.
Except for one phone call, right, Larry?
What's that?
Except for that one phone call you got, the million dollar donor.
You know something, Greg? I had a conversation with a million dollar donor, and it was two fifty on the call. That's part of the reason why I'm not comfortable with these numbers, now that you bring it up. What's the hurry?
There's no hurry, it's just, this is something that has been asked of the county, it's something that has been brought forward for five years or more, something that's a project that sat on the back burner. I, I don't want you to think that, you know, that I'm walking in here saying, this is something that we have to do. My job as manager is to take requests, put them up, and let you guys discuss them. You know, that's, that's what the purpose of this is. But I would encourage you to start thinking about, you know, this revenue that's gonna be coming in and the fund balance that we have, you know, we can spend, I can spend it on, on county operations, but I don't think, I think our county operations are doing fine. You know, we should find outlets in the community to improve the community with these funds that we have. That would be my recommendation, and to kind of what Lisa said before, what are the other ideas? I mean, if you got a ball field in these lakes, let's start writing some of this stuff up. I mean, we, we gotta find a way to do something.
We never ask those questions and reach out. It's certain ones we do it for, it's certain ones that we apply for, and we don't offer a blanket policy. I've never heard any of the towns I represent, I've received from the county, that we can apply for grant fund and then we'll help.
Which that community development fund was supposed to do.
Well, that, that was a start.
It hasn't, it isn't ready yet, I guess.
Right.
Well, it can be at any time.
So, let's.
We got the money in there?
We got money there, we got.
Let's lump it all together.
You tell us, we got eighteen million.
But there's no money in that fund, Greg.
Well, let's put it in.
To speak of.
We can make a motion, put it in right now. Well, I'll make a motion, but with money parked off. Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Number three win project, I believe, as part of their, uh, pilot, is supposed to contribute some. So, that, there will be some coming forward. Larger solar projects have also been hit up for this fund. So, the I D A continues to work on it, uh, but that, that's something that's coming from the I D A side.
Well, it's still going up. You know, obviously, we're not at a comfort level on these numbers, so. Let's go back to Double Play and see if they can, you know, firm up what they can come up with, and maybe they can increase that number to where we can get to a comfort level that.
I'm still new at all this. Can we set up a public hearing to have people come in and talk about this, or that? Or do we just push them out or whatever?
It was on the agenda for tonight, wasn't it? The, the, I think it went out, so, unless we're gonna vote on a local law or something like that, we're not gonna, if they can show up if they want to.
Can we put it out, Joan, can we put it out for a referendum?
We could.
By August twentieth. Yeah, we have to have it in by August twentieth.
Because it gets voted on in November.
All right. I'm good with that, aren't you?
Well, I don't, I'm not, I'm not on board with the public.
So, we're putting potentially spend, okay, now I'm taking the other side, spending seven million dollars by public referendum? Is that the idea? We put it out to the people to vote on? Because maybe you'll get a thousand people to show up and they all belong to Double Play.
That's the way it goes. You know what, that's the way it goes. They're all taxpayers, aren't they?
How you're gonna, um, design the question?
Well, let me ask you.
And how they're gonna answer it. Do you want the county to be involved, for instance, in investing a large sum of taxpayer dollars for a privately run community center?
Can we just do random refer, references like that? No, I don't think we can do that.
I mean, you can, you can also, you can set it for the next meeting, too, to have a hearing, have another public hearing on it. We can, we can set a public hearing like we do for all the, the C D B G grants and all, you know?
They don't count.
Before we go out to a referendum.
If we're gonna spend seven million, I think we'd get them, but I think it's too quick. I think it needs to be a longer timeframe if we're gonna set a date to try and do a public hearing, so. We can get word out.
And then Larry had it, right.
I wouldn't be surprised if you all don't start getting more emails and proposals after this meeting.
So, what would, what would mean, people comfortable with? A lower financial commitment?
Well, originally, when it started, it, it seemed like kicking in a milk. And then as things progressed, it's gone from here to there to there. And it's just kinda like, you know, as some people buy in, I, I'm like Larry, I have trouble with numbers. I know you're getting hammered, I know some of these other people are getting hammered, too. Um, I'll be honest with you, I, you know, I was told I was supposed to get some phone calls, but I have not received one.
I haven't either.
I haven't either.
So, I guess the thing is, is as far as I'm concerned, they're preying on the younger, more gullible ones right now.
Are you calling me gullible?
Jerry, I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt.
Jerry, Jerry.
Are you calling me young like that?
You should have left me that young. Yeah, you should have left me that young.
I got a question.
Oh, and Jerry must be gullible, too. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, my, wow.
I needed that to know.
So, just, I, I agree with what Larry's saying, you know? This is very much a concept phase, and I think we're having a good discussion. The issue with the numbers is, I believe we're gonna continue running to the same wall. Everything's a hypothetical until you have that anchor that's saying, we're moving this or we're not moving it. Laugel, we're moving it, you in or you're out? Dyson, we're moving it, you're in or you're out? You know, everything else is hypothetical. So, I think we can go back to all these people, you're still gonna get hypothetical answers.
Let's pick a number that we want them to put in, and they can close the gap to help it.
So, like, if Double Play could do something for five, if they had five million, they could do something. So then, if we say, okay, we'll come through with five, and then if all these other places commit to it, then the project may hold. But then that goes back to the twenty percent with the grant, so I guess that's.
And, and my question would be, are we the ones building it and owning it? Or is it Double Play doing it and we're just contributing because it's a community service?
If we're, if we're holding, not paying for it, I think we're gonna be in charge of it, no offense.
Well, I don't know if he's going out to bond for it, if it's gonna be four or five million, maybe you're just gonna.
Well, if it's that, but we're talking about anywhere, as I've heard, figures between nine and twelve, or seven. Well, but still, if we're a million dollars, it's a hell of a lot different discussion than it is seven, as far as I'm concerned.
The other thing is, if you ask me, do I, do you care if I spend seven million dollars? I'm gonna say, hell no. But if you ask me, do I wanna spend seven million dollars with these benefits for the county? Because we're all county residents, regardless of where the heck we live, I'm gonna give you a different answer probably. If I like what the benefits and outcome to the building.
Yeah, but it's kinda like this, I represent the people where I come from.
But did you tell them the benefits of what they're gonna have? Did you explain the project to them? I couldn't, because I've only looked at it for a short period of time. It's, it's like asking a question without putting out the communication.
There you go.
Ryan, you haven't put anything in three hours.
It does, yeah.
I know, and it's not three hours, it's still.
I'm occupied this time, I apologize.
I, I still think, I'll agree with Jerry, but let's put it out to a public referendum in November, and we can get it all over with.
Well, you know, another way of looking at it is, one percent, uh, one percent increase in our tax levy is about a hundred thousand dollars, right? So, well, you know, here, regardless of where the money comes from, at three hundred thousand dollars a year for the next thirty years, we're looking at a three percent tax levy increase. Or three, we're gonna spend three percent of the tax levy on this, whichever way you might look at it, so. You know, it's, it's a big no.
But where he says, how do we pay for it?
Maybe there's some way of justifying that.
I don't know.
I still think we need.
Larry, with this, how do we pay for it? Double Play payment is a hundred and twenty thousand. That's nothing to do with the tax levy or taxpayer money or any of that, right? Annual payment to Double Play, which we've already agreed to, is twenty thousand. Again, that doesn't raise.
Number three pilot is three hundred and twenty-six, two eighty-nine.
Exactly.
Three percent.
Exactly, three twenty-six, two eighty-nine. Still isn't gonna raise the taxes.
I didn't say it was gonna raise the taxes.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
About three percent of our tax levy.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it, is it, I mean, I think we should look at what else we spend about three percent on. What we spend more.
Maybe there's a way of justifying that three percent on this project. I think the project has value, the question is, is, is the value more than three percent of the tax levy?
How mu, how much did we, Ryan, how much did we raise? How much in the budget? How much did we gain by the point eight-six we raised the taxes? Wasn't it closer to two hundred thousand dollars?
I thought it was around a hundred and fifty, but our levy, if you, if you keep it very simple, our levy's around seventeen million dollars. So, uh, you can bind one percent of that, point zero zero one.
One, it's a hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
A hundred and seventy, so, two, two percent, basically, not three, we're looking at two percent. Hey, it's all dollars, you know, it's all dollars.
And I would like to think that we're a county that would.
You know, and we sit there, and how much do we, how much do we pay for that J C C study?
The J C C study?
Yeah, that J C C study that we get every year, questionnaire, questionnaire.
Free five thou, we contribute five thousand.
Five thousand, right? Well, then, one of the big things was, was childcare. We got Brittany Burris right now, Brittany, well, not Burris anymore.
Yes.
Um, but Brittany Davis looking at how to get childcare into this community.
I, I still think we need to get some real numbers so that we know what the real ask is.
And what, Joan, what would that be? I mean, an M O U is not, it's, what kind of a binding, what do we need to call it? A letter of?
An M O U.
Something. A letter of intent. Or a letter of commitment, maybe?
When we, when we went through this with J C C, we had them sign a letter of intent before we built the facility, once the facility was built.
We gave an M O U, right? And then, when it was built, we acted into an actual agreement.
Yeah, and so, we ought to do that with each of the people, that's what you're asking for, Larry.
And that's what's to do.
Well, Double Play is wanting to initiate that process.
Yeah, yeah, they, yeah.
Well, I would think if we had a letter of intent, you know, that, um, that, uh, firmed up these numbers that they've given us, so that we're gonna handle on what they really have, but.
Yeah, very reasonable.
And it could be even more.
In the end, they can say, honestly, they can get, they can get these ads out. Say anything you want.
Comfortable with.
Well, I.
That was a different.
Put it up to them, so.
Absolutely. You, you could get to something where if they can, if they can get commitments for all of these, they've got the seven million plus, they still need the funds. We could see what else they could squeeze out from other donors by saying, we'll match every dollar fifty cents or something like that, maybe. And that way, we're not putting it in, but they're like, oh, we're so close to hitting our goal, and suddenly, people start coming out of the woodwork, you know, to put money into it. I think there's a role for us to play, I don't think it has to be that, seven million dollars, even if it means we don't have to own the facility, you know, and there's, there's potential.
That's a good way, um, you know.
I like the idea, I like this conceptual, I think it's a great idea, I like us being involved, but I'm uncomfortable, like you said, Jerry, and Larry, and everybody else with the dollar figure. I think that's a lot to ask the people to put into it, um, it was too much.
I, I think what, I, I agree with what you're saying, and really, they are good salesmen at Double Play.
They are.
And they need to sell it.
Yep.
And if they sell it, like, we think they can sell it, then they probably will get more money, just like you just described, because they are good salesmen at it. And, but it's, it's up to them, not us, to sell it.
And it's even, like you and I talked about, trying to get a commitment from all the towns that would use it. What would they be willing to contribute? And the other thing, and I know this is, but, how much is a monthly membership gonna cost? Have some idea what it is, because that will allow people to see if they can even come close to it, you know, where, oh, I'd like to join, you know, I think it's great, but then again, you look at it financially, if it's sixty dollars a month per person, if it's twenty or sixty for a family, it's some price that if they really wanna do it, they can afford to do.
At your age, it's thirty dollars a month, Jerry.
Right.
At your age, it would be thirty dollars a month.
Well, I'm lucky, I can make it round the track once, so, yeah.
No, no insurance that comes with it.
It's not a timed effort, you can take as long as you need.
No, but, you know, the skin of the game, you get from whoever wants to get into it, even down there, because some people throw in, it's like, well, like, I told them, you know, when we gave them the forty thousand dollars before, I said, you gotta start budgeting if you want this to go. So, and you get people saying, well, yeah, we'd, we'd come participate. Well, let's get them on the damn hook somehow. So, we know where we're setting.
So, Double Play, basically, these numbers that we have here are from Double Play. I think letters of intent from each of these funding sources is a fantastic idea, that'll nail this down. Um, is it okay if the county continues? I mean, we haven't done much other than me listening to Double Play, putting out this presentation, we haven't done anything. Can we work with some of these entities with Double Play, or do you want them to, to be the ones that go out and then come back with more stuff?
I think if you have one source, it's better than two, you might get confused.
Yeah.
Good point. And I.
What do you mean by work with?
Can we work with Double Play?
I don't see the, the town of Laugel or village of Laugel. Some of these places are not politically bold enough, if I can be honest, to put something on paper as a commitment, unless there's someone else standing next to them saying, we're committed too. They're, Laugel's gonna say, no, we're not doing anything. They're not gonna put it on paper unless there's someone else there with them. I honestly believe that, and the same with the village.
Well, okay.
And the state's not gonna give us anything, the state's not gonna give us anything. Yeah.
Okay, so, I guess I can live with two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand to get them to invest, but nothing more. Because I hate to say it, more than likely, they're not gonna do it anyways.
You mean annually or one time?
No, if, if they, if they chip in two hundred and fifty thousand to two town, the town and the village.
For the project costs.
Then I could see us throwing in matching there.
Okay.
What I'm saying, well, I guess what I'm saying is, can I help Double Play hold their hand, try to deal some of this down? Or do you not want the county involved? That's what I, I would want to see.
I personally don't think we should be in it. I think they need to present it to us and come up with what we gotta fund, that's the way I feel.
So, when I interviewed with the board legislators, I said three things. Mental health, which we're working on, but this is something I could add to that, jobs, and childcare. This hits all three, but what also is hitting jobs is the hospital hiring thirty C N A's. But how else are we gonna get these people to come to our community? We need to invest in our community. If we don't invest in things in our community, then those thirty physicians are going to stay open at the hospital. You know, no matter how much we pay them, if there's nobody to watch their kids, if they don't, if they don't have anything to do here, then they're going to stay in Watertown.
But don't you, I mean, maybe I'm wrong in my reasoning, don't you think that's an opportunity if people know there's a need, that individuals would start daycare? I mean, I, I kinda think we've got a lot of entrepreneurs and stuff like that, and maybe limited amount of what each group can do. But I, I'm not, you know, I guess, that's my thing, so we're building it for daycare, that's part of it, but on the same aspect, I'm not sure somebody else can provide the same thing, or maybe three, four people.
I hope they can, and so, for every one, for every eight children in this county, there is one certified daycare spot. So, if three other people do it, we will still need three more.
Maybe a whole bunch of people up in Westside would need.
I hope so.
Osceola. But how you gonna get them? I, you know what, for daycare, they'll go anywhere.
Yeah, I will, I'm, I'm taking my kids to Great Bend for daycare, because it's so convenient to do it at Great Bend, so.
Childcare, it's the barriers of entry, it's very difficult in New York to start. You can't just start a childcare business in your garage, like, it's, you know, it's hard, it costs a lot of money.
It didn't used to be like that.
No, absolutely not.
And now, they, they direct the whole system of grandmother watching four or five kids before and after school.
I think in New York City or something, they require the masters to do childcare, it'll just completely, you know, there goes every grandmother who does.
So, yeah, I think it's a big, I think it's a big commitment, but I think it's worth it. And also, if we do like a half thing where it's a lot smaller, I think it would be, then it would be a community center. But I think if we do the big, huge, then assuming to be an attraction, you can probably get people to come from other counties. They will drive forty-five minutes for an attraction, because there's not a lot to do here, if you didn't.
Call, call it the way, call it the way in Watertown, and ask them. Call it, call it away in Watertown, ask them, ask the director up there, how far do those people travel for those sports, those sports teams up there on that dirt field?
We travel Unica from Loudville.
When I was raising my daughter, I traveled all over where they first went, Rochester, anywhere, you know. So, that's the way it goes, you do what you gotta do for your kid, and I think that's the way people even in West Liden might do that. I don't know for sure, but all be, they all might be caves up there, I don't know.
Where's that?
West Liden?
I think I'm, I'm more than comfortable, obviously, with Ryan helping Double Play.
Yeah, but I'm fine with that.
Yeah, but I have to. See, we can get commitments and, you know, we don't have to, I don't think we retire ourselves for that 7 million figure, and I don't wanna put it out to a public vote. I would like to give us flexibility, if we're gonna vote, no, we'll just vote no, but I don't wanna see us, thanks to what we're, we talked about this all the time, we were hired to exercise judgment, and bear the consequences of it if we do it.
Yeah, definitely.
But I wanna talk to my town, too, because I have discussed it with my board, yeah.
You're playing a film next.
Okay, so we're gonna firm up the commitment, so then we're gonna make this a decision. Okay, resolution.
Resolution number 139, resolution authorizing and ratifying tentative agreement and final contracts between the County of Lewis and the United Public Service Employees Unit, representing the Sheriff's Road Patrol Unit.
So we'd like to make that motion early, but, um, something might get discussion.
Thank you to everybody that worked on it, they did a good job, yeah.
And just for the record, so everybody knows that, as you saw from the tentative agreement, this bargaining unit did agree to form the new health tier, and that's really what we, as a county, were trying to have happen, and so that's reflected in the compensation.
All favor. Anyone to vote?
You, you need a per person vote for it, or not?
Nope.
Do you, uh, you know, if I can raise your hand, you're good.
Okay, motion carries.
Ready for a adjournment motion? What, are we gonna take our, come on, go?
We're actually checking into that, to make sure that the broadband is set up correctly and stuff.
Right? I haven't heard that from the fire chief yet.
Okay.
Well, maybe Jerry could speak to him.
Hosting a legislative session with West, the West Liden Firehouse, where we all get to, to attend to this.
I, I can ask, I mean, we've had one down there before, if somebody else wants to have one in their district, but I will ask.
We just wanna livestream it, that's all, so we gotta know if they've got it. Yep. If not, you know what, if not, we will figure it out. I think we need to go down to West Liden, it's the right thing to do. So if we gotta get a gigantic hotspot, powder can figure it out.
Yeah, and I appreciate going to West Liden, but there's some other towns that we have.
Broadband already going.
Is there somewhere else you'd like to go for your last meeting? Is there somewhere else you'd like to go for your last meeting?
Right here.
Hope you're feeling the same way.
I'm saying, we do.
Do you wanna do that?
Do we do that?
Over and off. I don't know if I can.
I think we need a quick executive session, so. Someone would.
Do you want, uh, you take the session to discuss a personnel matter, you know, at the department?
I'll make that one.
You have a second? All right, if you want to take a break, or you want?
First of all, no, let's go.
Okay, very executive.
We'll be back in there.
Sure is it?